I will note that you are live, that your mics are live and that you are recording.
Again, we've never been there. You've seen that.
Did you see it happen?
Yes, I did.
Seven? Seven clock if you want to call for order. All right. Calling this meeting to order, let's stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You guys have to call your meeting to order.
Yes, make a motion to open the meeting for the town board. All in favor?
Aye.
To bring your part email from last night on CIT.
Sure.
Just want everyone to do it.
So we're going to make one adjustment to this agenda. You guys are violating public game laws. You can't have secret conversations.
They're on the mic.
Yeah, on the mic. We're good.
We're just whispering into the mic.
Okay, so we're making one change to this agenda. We're going to put public comment after we hear from Bond Council.
Will Bond, that should be remaining because I didn't have a question for the Bond Council.
Well, I want to send him home as soon as possible because, you know, these guys cost us money.
It does seem like there's a lot of public here that I can see.
And Josh is a member of the building committee.
I don't remember the building committee, so I'd like to see what's going on.
So you want to make a public comment regarding the project?
I agree.
I have no problem with that at all. So.
Your honor, also the auditing process.
Right, so the other change we're making to the agenda is the auditing firm has had an emergency. They're not available to be with us this evening. So that will be rescheduled for December 9th.
I request an agenda change.
Yes.
Could we move number 12 to executive session?
I'm fine with that.
Looking long-winded.
Well, I guess the town accepts our own agenda, correct?
Right.
What do you want to change?
Just Tom and I from our CIT meeting yesterday want to have a brief conversation about sending up a town/village email.
So Tom, you want to add that to our agenda?
CIT, you need puberty?
Or the, I'm sorry.
CIT.
Okay.
Temptation/Implication Commission.
That's backwards there.
So let's add that, no, let's add that to the first thing on our business agenda because you guys are going to adjourn your meeting.
I want to adjourn as soon as we can. If we have a meeting tomorrow.
Would that mean we want to move item, consider moving item 11 up so that it could be after?
We don't even need to do, well.
If you need our votes?
You don't. We don't need to do anything.
This successful village.
Yeah, we don't need to do anything.
I saw town and I thought if you wanted us to approve some. So I'd like to make a motion to accept this agenda with the changes.
Second.
All in favor?
I make a motion to the town to accept the agenda as.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have any announcements. First thing, we're going to hear from Josh. Josh, could you grab a mic?
Yeah.
You might even want to come to the podium. That's.
Put your mic over there.
No, but.
No, you're here, isn't it?
We're just here.
Here you go.
Thank you. I'm Josh Honig and I'm on the building committee and have been for a long time. What I'm about to say, I have spoken, I am speaking on behalf of Dave Lent, Carol Roper and myself and opinions, some opinions we have. I'll be a little bit all over the place because I put it together at the last minute. It is reckless and irresponsible to sign contracts with the professionals who will be involved with this project without having all our ducks in a row. Prior to signing, the yearly ongoing expenses such as building, maintenance, heat, electric, et cetera, should be established whether we're partners of or landlords with the village. We all want to move this project ahead as quickly as possible, but we must also be transparent and protect our taxpayers from any problems that arise from the hastiness to move forward. We at this point feel that transparency has not been there all the time and there will be problems with moving ahead without answering and clarifying responsibilities of all involved. An example of the lack of transparency is at the last village board meeting. We were under the impression that they were supposed to be voting on being tenants in the new building and instead they were suddenly partners in a building that they at best would be using 25% of and probably less than 20% of in reality. I also was wondering, I had seen, we had seen a lot of emails with Ken Bond and stuff like that and we wondered if the town board had any input in the conversation with Ken Bond outside of maybe one or two members. We feel the cleanest way to do this project is to have it be a town project and have the village rent their space if they're still interested. The details of that agreement could be spelt out in an IMA for the rental. Why? One, the town already owns the land that we're planning on building on. Two, we have to demolish and clean up the old building, which leads to the question, is the village willing to pay to share the cost of doing so? Three, when the town first agreed to move forward on this project, it was under the assumption that the town would be the owner. And then according to something that I read that came from Ken Bond, if the village were to dissolve while LDC bonds are outstanding, the village's obligations under the IMA would be assumed by the town. Likewise, if the village were to dissolve while its GO bonds that financed the facility were outstanding, the town would assume the village's debt and annual debt service obligations on the village's GO bonds, according to Ken. This is important because it is likely that the village won't exist in 10 years because the state is pushing so hard to consolidate government. In a meeting last week, the mayor said, at a meeting we were at, the village might not even be around in 10 years. In other words, in any scenario, the town gets stuck with the debt, so we might as well make it a town project only. If the village is not going to last as long as their agreement, whatever it is, 20, 30 years as renters or partners, then for the sake of the taxpayers, our community, they ought to consider that million dollars a year that is available to our community if they consolidate with the town or just dissolve. We probably could get a million dollars a year for the seven years or so. It would surely help to rebuild our New Paltz government structures and take some pressure off the taxpayers whom you all serve. Questions. Will the village taxpayers be paying twice under the way that you're going to try to set up this LDC? Will village voters be voting twice, both as village and town voters? If the LDC were used, the Board of Directors of the LDC, I guess known as the Board, would approve design and construction contracts, but the Board's approval would be subject to ratification by members of the LDC, namely the town and village boards pursuant to the LDC bylaws. I don't really understand how does that work? As the members of the Board would change during the existence of the LDC, none of you are likely to be in office 20 years from now. In conclusion, this should not be a joint project and even if it were, the village should not be in control of it. The only thing they should have is saying is the layout of the space that they would use as renters.
Okay, so we have a, oh, Dave, you want to make a comment as well?
First, I want to say that I have all the concerns that Josh has. I've been sending emails for the last four months to you gentlemen identifying the all areas of possible future contention that possibly could arise and must be discussed, documented and signed off between both town and the village before, before you address joining or supporting an LDC or IDA, which has its own additional agreements if you're going to do that jointly, which I don't support. The best and simplest arrangement is the village to rent space and I thought a few weeks ago that was the plan. Why the change? If so, you will need an IMA for the renting first. I'm going to tell a true story that happened here in New Paltz 25 years ago in regards to town and village contract. At my first town board meeting as supervisor in 1990, there was proposal to approve a joint contract between the village and the town to buy the Walk Hill Railroad that runs through the town and village and for the Rail Trail Association to maintain it. I supported the idea during the campaign and wanted to get things going. The village had already approved the agreement, but the town had not gotten around to it the previous year, so it was on that first night's agenda. So I read the document and what did I find but a paragraph that stated, "The Rail Trail Association would maintain the trail and if at any time they determine that the bridge over the Walk Hill needed repair, they could re-contract for the repair and the town was responsible for the bill." This was forever. No engineering study of the condition of the bridge had been done. Needless to say, I pulled it from that action that night and the contract was to change before the town approved it. At least at that time, we had a document to evaluate and approve. Today, we have nothing, just going on blind faith that you can work out things to a mutual satisfaction. Really?
Okay, so now we have a present to any other public comment?
I have a question.
Mr. President.
I have been at a lot of meetings and I've never heard any statement that the village might dissolve in the foreseeable future.
Neither have I. Neither have I, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Okay, so let's move on to our presentation.
We accept the agenda.
Well, I just want to understand something. First of all.
Well, I've never heard that.
Why we have to sit through the presentation?
No, we're not. We're not.
Okay, okay. Second, can I just ask you a question?
Hold on, hold on. Susan has a question.
In the business, after the Ken Bond thing, we expected.
No, they're all for, they're all for the village. They're fine.
You guys are going to adjourn your meeting after we have the discussion.
So there's going to be uprising. You don't need us for it.
No, they're all fine.
So let's have the discussion.
So let's have our presentation from Ken Bond.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth Bond. I'm a partner at Squire Patton Boggs. We are the bond council for the village of New Paltz and for the town of New Paltz, which puts us in a unique situation to be of help in things that the town and the village are contemplating doing together. Couple of weeks ago, I got a call from Tim Rogers. Where is he?
Right here.
Who I didn't know from Adam and I didn't know who this guy was. He says, "I'm the mayor of New Paltz." I said, "Oh, my God, I should, I better straighten up here and get to know who my client is." And, because I was used to Jason, as you know. In any event, Tim raised a very simple but basic point. Could the town and the village build a government center together jointly? And the answer to that is yes, and I'll explain it to you and how that can be done in a couple of ways. But the question actually reflects on changes going on in New York with regard to municipalities working with each other on a shared service basis. And I just came from a all-day conference at the Rockefeller Institute in Albany today, which talked about the conditions in New York and the fate of local governments doing things together and dealing with the state and dealing with conditions in their communities. And a couple of things sort of stand out from that which I think is useful for you to know. One is, not so much here, but perhaps further upstate, there is a rampant amount of poverty and there's horrible conditions, particularly in the large cities, that isn't being addressed and it will require local governments to be involved to try to make those communities more livable. And the second thing is, the state, while it offers all kinds of assistance and a few years ago, the legislature passed laws that allowed communities to consolidate on one basis or another, which is a very confusing, difficult law. And this community, these communities, you, the town, the village, a couple of years ago, worked on consolidation with very difficult laws and ultimately nothing came of it. But the tenet that came out of this conference today was that the state's got its own problems. The federal government has essentially abandoned local governments. There's no such thing as much federal aid except on a project basis. And that a lot of the solutions to conditions in our communities are going to be led by the local governments themselves. And I think that is important for you to take into consideration because this is a unique opportunity for the town and the village to do something which is going to enhance the entire New Paltz community, which is both the town and the village. So the concept of having a joint facility where you have the offices of the village, the offices of the town, the fire department, the courts, the EMS, a senior center, whatever else you want to add to it, really would be an enhancement to the community rather than two separate facilities which are aging and, I guess, in one case, no longer habitable. How to go about this? If you were to look at traditional financing and development, you could have the town as a municipality, as the owner of the facility, just plan to build a new building and consult with the village and ask, "How much space would you like?" And you can rent it, what the earlier comment presenter made. That's a simple and direct way of doing it. The town would issue bonds and it could rent space to the village under some sort of a lease agreement. I don't think you would need much of an intermunicipal agreement. It would be pretty much a simple real estate lease with all kinds of other provisions that go into a lease. The other, and then the town would issue the debt and the village would simply pay rent, which would reflect a portion of the debt service on the bonds of the town. The other thing you can do is you can have both the town and the village issue bonds in some proportion, the town's portion and the village portion, however that's divided up. And then you would have an intermunicipal agreement as to how you would use the space. That's a little more complicated. The third thing you can do is finance the project through a local development corporation. And that's the thing that we've been talking about and emailing about back and forth. And there are interesting public policy issues and reasons for the town and the village to consider this. And I'll give you, and the primary economic one is getting around the Wicks Law, which is pretty much a dislike by governments in terms of doing financing projects and entering into contracts. We did a financing for the Rensselaar School District 10 years ago at this point, where we used a special corporation to finance what would have been a $100 million school facility. And we did it with a labor agreement and negotiated bonds outside of the Wicks Law and the whole thing came in for about 70 million. So there is about a 30 million dollar, 30% actually could be as much as 40% savings in the cost of construction of doing a facility using a conduit like a local development corporation. And given the fiscal impacts that you're trying to save the taxpayers' money, that is one good economic reason for doing it. The other reason for doing it is that the facility would be operated by an independent board of directors so that the maintenance and operation of the facility doesn't become a problem that the each board has to come and look at every time something goes wrong. And yet, through a corporate structure using a local development corporation, both the town and the village have control as the two members of the corporation. The formation of a local development corporation is a relatively simple act. It requires resolutions by each of the town boards by a majority, each of the village and the town board by a majority vote to approve a certificate of incorporation and bylaws and to file the certificate of incorporation, which our office would do, with the Secretary of State and I think there's a nominal fee. And then it's formed. If you're going to consider an LDC, my recommendation would be to form the thing and once it's formed, you can either use it or not use it. And let me point out one thing where using it might be an advantage right from the beginning. Some of the emails I've seen and the point that this gentleman raised was what to do with the property of the town where the facility needs to be demolished. And the question came up, who's going to pay for it and so on and so forth. Well, if you have the local development corporation, you can convey that property to the LDC and the LDC can, with an agreement that you will have to develop between the town and the village, that cost can be shared between the town and the village and the LDC can then dispose of the contracts and all of the work that's necessary to demolish the building and prepare the site for development. Sort of a side point which hasn't been raised, well, it hasn't been raised, that I'll address. The point's been made about whether or not there should be a vote for this. And if you finance the project through an LDC, there's no requirement for a vote. You're not under the local finance law or the state constitution. If the village and the town were to do a joint financing, as I mentioned earlier, then you would need a permissive referendum or you could have a mandatory referendum on the bonds, which creates a small problem. If one community passes it and the other community doesn't, then, you know, that becomes, that becomes an issue. It stalls the project. But in the disposition of the town's property to another entity, there is a provision where you can have a vote and I'll have to take a look at a lot more carefully, but there may be a requirement for a vote. And what we did in Rensselaar was we actually, because we had the same problem, we had to convey the old school building to a developer. And we used that as an opportunity, even though the question on the referendum was simply about conveying a prop, conveying an old building to a developer, we used the opportunity for a referendum to let the public know what the project was and to see if they would support it. And I think they got overwhelming, 85% felt in favor of it. So one of the things, if you want to have public input and public approval and an abundance of transparency in this project, if you were to use the LDC, it's just a vote on the conveyance of the property to the LDC. An LDC requires a board of directors like any other corporation. It is a special not-for-profit corporation formed under the not-for-profit corporation law. The way we wrote the bylaws, and this is, and we're not suggesting that you use this approach, you can use another, is that you would have an odd number of members who are directors, so you wouldn't have tie votes, and that the town would have one more director than the village would have. You can do it any way you want to. That's just the way we wrote it out. So, because the town would probably take a larger share of the facility. Then the local development corporation would enter into the contracts, not subject to the Wicks Law, but subject to prevailing wage laws. And you can have, as I said, a project labor agreement and build the facility and issue bonds. Those bonds would be revenue bonds of the local development corporation. They would sell at an interest rate slightly above what the general obligation bonds of the town or the village would be. And they would be secured by payments by the town and the village, which would be annual appropriations of rent for use of the facility. When the project is up and running, the village and the town would both have to make annual appropriations to pay rent, which would cover debt service on the bonds and operation and maintenance costs. The directors of the corporation would keep a budget for the corporation and the village and town would use the facility in their, you know, as their respective interests appear. By having an independent board of directors at the corporate level, you probably defuse a lot of the problems that you would have if the town board and the village board tried to run the project directly. But that's, again, an issue for you to decide. When the bonds are paid off, the corporation can go out of business or it could stay in business and act as an administrator or operator of the project. The, another question that came up was whether or not you could use an existing not-for-profit that you have. My response to whoever pointed that out was that's possible. We tried once to take an existing LDC because we thought it would be efficient to just use one and try to amend it in order to do a new project. It turned out to be a nightmare and they abandoned it and they formed a new local development corporation. Other questions came up?
What I was thinking, Ken, that was my question, because we have a local one called Rubco.
Right.
Have you ever heard of them or not?
No.
Part of Rubco's mission, they have several divisions of it, but one of them is building municipal buildings.
Right.
So they already have that structure.
Well, as I said in my response, one thing you could do was for the LDC board to contract with them to actually do the operation and maintenance of the building. And that would be a useful role for them as opposed to the LDC directors having to do all that from scratch. So that's not uncommon, but it would be helpful for the LDC if you're going to use it to act as what we call a special purpose corporation, just having one purpose. And that way, there's no question about the revenues and the assets being pledged for bonds that are issued. Yes, sir?
Could this be done, sorry?
Dave, can I just, just one second. I just want to, I want to just introduce you to, we have a building committee that had worked on relocating the police to where they are now.
Yeah.
And the building committee was former supervisor Dave Lent.
Right.
Josh Honig and Carol Roper. I was supposed to be here. I guess she's not here.
She's going to be here.
Okay, and then we brought in this guy, George Siffrey. So I just wanted to let you know that they're the people who were sort of in charge of bringing this project forward and they've been working on this for a long time. So I just wanted to let you know who's asking questions. I'm sorry to interrupt.
Susan, can I give Dave the microphone?
Sure. I didn't mean to interrupt Dave. I just wanted to know.
Real quick question. Couldn't the town make an agreement alone with an LDC? Doesn't have to be the two corporations alone?
I suppose theoretically it could, but if I were the village, I wouldn't like that arrangement.
Who would be the other partner? It has to be a partnership.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you're going to do a joint project, the idea is that the two municipalities are participating in the conduit issuer's affairs and are owners of it.
Well, I thought, and I may be completely wrong, that this is, this practice has been done by some of the state university and that would just be one part number, one, the university contracting with others, no?
Still have another partner.
Well, the SUNY system does lease purchase agreements for dorms and things like this, but that, they're a state agency and that's a different animal than a municipality. So.
The question, and Tim, I appreciate you not answering. I'm not being rude. I just want to hear his answer. Does a limited development corporation, after being, a local development corporation, have to be in agreement between two entities or could one entity create an LDC for the purposes of moving forward on a project?
One, one could. That's, that's true.
That's the question. That was my question.
And I said, yes, but I would think. And I said, yes, but, but, but I would think that since this is a joint project, the local development corporation would want to have the, as members, the two communities. I'll give you an example. We represent an, an LDC in, in Westchester County, which has its purpose making what they call energy efficiency loans. And one town is the principal member of the local development corporation. Well, what they wanna do is get members, they wanna, they wanna be able to make these loans all over the state, and they're, they're working with an ICERTA, and Bank America, and a whole big thing. Well, every time they get a community to sign up, they just got Suffolk County to sign up, that community becomes a member of the local development corporation.
I, I understand, but, but theoretically and purpose, the town could do it alone and, and incorporate an LDC.
As a matter of law, they could do it alone.
Thank you.
And simply have an agreement with the village.
Yes, thank you.
Now, our county has set one up already, they have the Ulster County Development Corporation, UCDC, which is part of, Mike Hein put together, and he put together all the departments.
Right.
So we could, would you see, we could contract directly with them, or we would still form a local LDC?
Well, I mean, the purpose of the LDC is, you know, the, the specific project among, for which there's a purpose, is the building of a village and, and town joint government center. I don't know if the county's LDC would have that project as one of its purposes, and I can't imagine that the town and the village would essentially wanna be beholden to the county. I mean, the, the point is, you could find a lot of convenient entities. I mean, we're doing a, a bond issue right now where the most convenient issuer is a Wisconsin public authority that has national jurisdiction. And it's fine, you know, but it's just, it's, there it doesn't matter, 'cause it's a joint project for certain types of bond issues among several counties. But in your case, you've got a very specific project where you've got the, the only people who are, the only entities that are really interested in it are the village and the town, and you're working out the joint arrangement through...
You wanna start fresh, too?
Yeah, through, through a board of directors.
So if you have an existing LDC, and you are trying to use that LDC to take ownership of this project, wouldn't you have to change that LDC's?
Well, that, 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 it, it's more basic than that. You would have to go and review the certificate of incorporation, and amend it, and then, and file an amendment with the Secretary of State, and then go through the bylaws. As I said, we went through this with a prior project, and it was a nightmare. And, uh, you know, we never got that, all that far, because we decided we were just, you know, going, going the wrong way on a one-way street.
So, Ken, on this, let me have a couple of questions. You refer to the interests as membership interests rather than shareholder interests.
Right.
Are they membership interests?
Yeah, because a not-for-profit corporation operates not-for-profit.
Okay.
And there are no shareholders.
All right, so the membership interests would be certificates representing the percentage ownership interest of each government?
Yeah, technically, yes and no. You would have an inter, you'd have an intermunicipal agreement, which would lay that out.
Right, okay, but the intermunicipal agreement would cover more than just ownership?
Oh, sure, it would cover, cover a lot of it, including how much percentage of ownership, how, and see, ownership is really less important, 'cause it's owned by...
It's indirect ownership.
Because the, the ownership is by the local development corporation.
Right, so, I know that.
It's really the responsibility of each member, and it's the use and benefit of each member of the corporation to the facility.
So you answered that question for me. Now, the directors, how are they elected? Are they elected annually? What's the system for the continuity of management with an LDC?
The, again, a local development corporation is a corporation.
Right.
It's, it's not a business corporation, but it, it, it has corporate powers, and those are different in New York than municipal powers.
So it has directors?
So it has directors. Those directors are appointed by the members. In other words, the village board appoints the members, and the town board...
To serve for a term of years?
Um, I don't know what I've got it in there, I think I've got, maybe that's another one I did. The, the way to do it, or one way to do it is to have three-year terms staggered.
Okay.
So that two or three directors come up every, every year.
So they're...
And, and with term limits.
They're appointed by the membership interests to serve for a term of years?
Correct.
With or without compensation?
No compensation.
Okay.
Reimbursement is regular expenses, but no compensation.
All right, so no compensation. And we had talked here conceptually about having two elected officials from the village and two from the town, so I just wanna kinda back out, out on that now. Do these people have to be non-elected officials that are appointed, or can they be elected?
There is no hard and fast rule on that. There is a, a, two of the best practices, that the majority of the members of the board of directors of the LDC should not be elected officials in the community. So if you had a nine-member board, I wouldn't put more than two members of the village board or the, or the town board on.
All right, so the respective municipal, the, the trustees for the village and the town board then would vote their membership interests in favor of directors periodically?
They have the right to appoint directors.
Do they also have the right to fire them once they're appointed?
Well, yeah, that's in the bylaws. They can be fired for cause or...
But for cause is different, can they just arbitrarily say you're done?
Uh, we'll have to look, we'd have to look, the, the, we sent you a form of bylaws.
I'm just trying to get into the how...
They could, they could be fired without...
Kevin, I think the answer is yes.
Yeah, they can be fired without cause.
Okay. So each of the municipalities then would have the ability to appoint individuals that are both members and non-members of the respective boards?
That is correct.
All right, and does the LDC, because it owns the building, does it have employees?
It can have employees.
Well, should it? Does it need a bookkeeper?
It doesn't, the simplest thing is to try to keep the LDC, A, as mean and mean as possible. I mean, it can use the offices in the facilities, it can, it can use municipal employees to help...
In your experience, do, do, any of these LDCs, when you're operating a project this big, do they have a secretary or somebody that reports to the board?
They may have like one employee.
Okay.
Who, who handles the records and, and acts as the secretary.
All right, and the...
For administrative...
The LDC is basically incurring the debt and not the municipality, so...
That's right.
There's no general obligation bonds. They're relying on the revenues that, that each municipality basically is contributing on an annual basis to support the debt structure.
Mm-hmm.
Now, is there any penalty if one municipality arbitrarily decides they're not gonna contribute? Is there, is there any kind of mechanism or penalty or safeguard against that?
Yeah, basically, you'd bring an Article 78 or some kind of a lawsuit, civil action to, you know, pay a debt.
Okay, all right, and...
And, and that's the wrong word, to, 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 to make an appropriation.
Okay, so you force the appropriation then, right?
Well, you, you, you'd have to go in front of a judge.
Okay.
But the point is, and, and this is critical, is that these payments have to be appropriated every year. If they're not in the budget and they're not paid, you'd have a default on the bonds.
So to ask you another question, you know, most corporations might have some kind of a shareholders agreement or operating agreement going forward?
That's the IMA.
Is it possible for each municipality to commit in advance to making those payments, or is it impossible for a current board to commit for a future board?
Uh, getting to the, to the other question. We don't want the, we don't want the IMA, and we don't want the agreements of the town and the village to be more than annual appropriations, because once that happens, we come under attack, get come under attack for, uh, invalidly issued debt.
Okay.
Because the only debt that a municipality can issue in New York is general obligation bond debt supported by taxes. If you're going to try to do conduit financing, it has to be an annual appropriation, and it's got to be from a source other than the direct levy of taxes.
So there's no long-term commitment?
Well, there's, here's the long-term commitment, and we get into this in what we call tax exempt leasing. When, when, I'll take an example, we did a, a crane for the Albany Port Authority, okay? And it was a tax exempt leasing, the port authority is making annual appropriation. So the bank that's making the lease asks the question, what's the likelihood that they're not gonna make an appropriation, even though they don't have to? Well, they need the crane to buy this crane, because that's part of what they do. You have to, under state law, have a village office, you have to have a town office. So it's the essentiality of the thing that's being financed that makes the implied obligation. Now, this has actually been litigated in court of appeals, where these kinds of arrangements were attacked as being, you know, that should be treated like debt or be subject to a vote. And a court of appeals on numerous occasions have said it is annual appropriation, it's not debt.
All right, two other questions.
Before you, before you have to go with the question, I understand that the village has to have an office, and the town does, but it's not unfathomable that you can have a fight between the town and the village board, and you can have a couple of, I'll say village board, um, people only just because they have the smaller portions, that would be easier to, you know, to sort of say, we don't want to be in the...
To one kick the other out.
We don't want, we don't want to be in the building.
But they still need the crane?
We don't want, we don't want to be in the building.
You have a non-attorney clause.
I what?
Non-attorney, you can't throw them out.
No, 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 I'm not saying, no, no, I'm not saying that you wanna throw them out. I'm saying that they throw a fit, you know, or, one of the two throws a fit and says, we don't wanna be here with you anymore, we're leaving, kind of stuff. Look, this is new policy, I'm sorry, but you know what? I, you know, I have to ask this kind of question, okay?
But the offices are different floors, I mean...
Well, that was supposed to happen, but that's not happening that way, as I understand it, but...
Just a couple other questions.
No, no, that's a real question.
Yeah, it is.
I'm not saying it frivolously, I'm really asking, 'cause I really believe, having watched the town-village government for a very, very, very long time, I just think it's a question that needs to be asked, that's a question that needs to be considered. I just...
The town has...
How would you answer? No, but could we clarify, 'cause I couldn't hear it, I'm sorry, Susan. Were you asking?
I am saying, based on, because it's, it's annual appropriations. There's no commitment that the town and the village have to appropriate every year to give money to this building, okay? One of the two municipalities can say, I don't wanna be in the building with this other government, I don't wanna appropriate money, I'm out.
So your question was, what happens then? I, I just couldn't hear your question.
Yes, and basically, what happens is the other person's left holding the baton.
But where are they gonna go?
They might have an opportunity, because it might be a great project that comes...
Play it out. If you did make the appropriation and you moved out of the facility, 'cause you have some, some other place to go, under case law in New York, you'd probably be held liable for the entire remaining unpaid obligation.
Of the lease.
The lease, the lease, yeah, the lease would then be treated by debt. There's a, there's a case, Rochester Fund case, Amsterdam IDA, it's in the fellow division case from the nineties, where just this sort of thing happened. They had a solid waste facility, and they said, we don't like the solid waste facility anymore. Of course, and said, sorry buddy, you signed up, you can go off and have a second one, but you're obligated to take, to take care of that solid. So if, you, you don't have debt at the beginning, some, there's, there's nothing to say, a judge isn't gonna say that, that we're gonna treat it like debt in terms of the obligation.
So, what, my, two other questions. Referendum, we need a referendum to sell the town parcel to the LDC?
I need to check on, it might be elective, you may not have to.
Okay, now, do we have to sell it at fair market value or not?
Well, that's why you have the vote, because, and I, and I think it applies to towns. You have, if, if, the, one way to sell it is to go out and solicit bids and, and get the best offer. The other way is to sell it to a preferred developer, which in this case would be the LDC, and get approved by the board, I think that's, I think that's the law.
Okay, I just want to...
So Ken, then, you couldn't, for example, seek appraisals for the...
Oh, you have to seek appraisal.
And use the appraised value as the value that the LDC paid for the property?
No, no, you would, you would get an appraisal, yeah. I mean, it can't, it has to be an arms-length transaction.
So it has to be done in appraised value?
Yeah.
But, but, but it's not just, it's not just the land, there's also a building on it. So the town could sell to the LDC the, the land and the building, and say, here, and now the quote LDC comprised of the town and village obligation...
Finances the acquisition of that building, plus the construction would buy...
And then plus the demolition, the demolition and the construction.
And just one other question, Ken, and I'm done. At the end of the term of the obligations, you're left with an LDC, how do you get it out? How do you, how do you shut it down and just...
Well, for tax purposes, it has to be shut down anyway. It, it has, in other words, the property goes back to the respective...
So is it a reverter?
It's a reversion.
Okay.
Now, the other thing you can do is keep it around for non-financial purposes, as just a title owner and...
So it just goes back to the municipalities, based upon their percentage ownership?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
But that disposition is part of the IMA?
Yes.
So do they own an undivided percentage interest in a building then, at that point?
I think it would be undivided. I would say it's undivided in the sense that you might wanna specify square footage for each office, but...
Or you might just specify the percentage if you're not at the end.
But a lot, a lot of that space, I think, might be common space.
Right.
Well, there's a lot of space that would be for the police, which are town, or the justice court, which is the town, and then the rest is, is...
Okay.
As a total of the building, it's probably, it's less than, less than half of it would be in town and village offices and circulation.
Right.
The rest is police and court.
Yes, sir.
One point that the... Dave, you gotta use the mic.
One point that the board should recognize if they're going to do it, is that the present town board property also has another building on it, community center. So the property would have to, that would have to be removed from that dis, dis arrangement as the property.
Subsubject to...
Yeah, I, yeah, it would, you know, you're gonna talk in a survey and separate the property, I just, but once again, I want you, that the town could do it alone.
Oh, yeah.
But the LDC could own all the property, including that existing building?
Well, but what, what is that, what is the existing building used for? That's possible.
I think there's another possible alternative, and that is, because the community center has a lot of meeting space in it, and that's part of the requirements of both the town and the village, I, I think that the entire property could be conveyed to the LDC, based on, on an appraised value.
Additionally...
And then...
The village has already contributed to the, has already contributed to the ownership of these assets.
No.
Absolutely. The, the town uses village taxpayer funds to maintain all of these assets. The village is already an owner. We're not talking about separate competing entities.
Village taxpayers, it's not village company.
Well, the property is owned by the town, not the town and the village.
And the, the village is part of the town.
But the village has a separate budget.
Right, it is not the same.
But you use taxpayer, you use village taxpayer funds for these assets owned by the town.
Ken, I...
So the, the village already has an equity stake in all of these assets. These are not separate competing entities.
Those taxpayers are paying as town taxpayers. Those taxpayers who live in the village and are town people pay town taxes to the town. Their, their village taxes go to the village as a separate entity. They are involved with the town property as town, as town people, not as village people. The village is a separate entity. So they don't have their money going from your government into that property.
Precisely.
They have it going as just townspeople.
Precisely.
So then I don't understand your logic.
What he's saying is that because the village residents are part of the town, those people, which residents and town residents already have a stake in the building.
That's true.
So, that's what he said. And he's, and this process would simply increase their form of stakeholdership to include them as village residents as well, solely as village residents. So when the LDC takes title to this property, it's gonna, if, if this works this way, the town will have a percentage interest in this LDC, and the village will. So if you wanna break it down, the village will have a pure percentage interest, and then a blended percentage interest in the town side, because the town is the village in the town. Or the village is included in the town, or, or are you...
Yes, ask it another way, let's say we found another site, a third site, not, not this one we're in today, or Veterans Drive, and we built this property, then we go out jointly and buy it and determine who's gonna pay which share of it. That would leave the Veterans Drive site vacant. If it were then sold, are you saying, Tim, that those monies, those proceeds from the sale should be shared between the town and the village?
Well, we can go back to, to my discovering gold on Veterans Drive analogy. So if we discover gold on Veterans Drive and we then sell the property for half a billion dollars, the village taxpayers will participate in that capital gain.
If that gold were found there today, would that be your, your position also?
No, but Marty, what he's saying is, if the town sells the property, the town sells it, sells it as an A fund sale, which means that the village participates in the benefit obtained from the sale of the... from the sound of the income, that's what he's saying.
Where did the proceeds from the sale go?
Right, not the, the village government's budget does not participate, but the equity stake, that's where village residents, who are town residents as well as town outside of the village resident, they all participate in that capital gain, in that hypothetical situation.
But again, the village budget does not benefit from that. It is a separate budget.
We're not talking about doing anything different than we are already doing. We already.
It's a yes or no question.
We already.
We're not in disagreement, Tim.
Right. But it seems like there's some confusion about.
It was my misunderstanding of what you were describing, Tim, that's all right.
But also, under the structure of an LDC, they actually do not, they can't acquire government property without going to a bidding process or an appraisal process in New York State. That's in, that's in Dean O'Callaghan's paper, actually states that.
Yeah.
So they could, we could transfer it and just, under the assumption that we are just going to have the LDC transfer the property to, I apologize, the government, transfer to the LDC for a dollar. I think there's, I think there's a 10-day hearing period required, and that would be it.
What would be the reason for doing that, Jeff, for a dollar instead of $10 or whatever?
Okay, $10.
Well, whatever the price is at, why?
It has to be a monetary dollar. Does that require the local?
No, you know, I misspoke on that.
It doesn't require a vote, the advantage.
He's right, he's right. You can transfer it for almost no consideration.
For no, and that's allowed, that's unique to New York State.
That is, that is part of the LDC.
The advantage to that being is, what is the advantage of putting a dollar value? Are we going to sell it to our own selves? In other words, if we are forming the LDC, and I tell the LDC, I want you to incur more debt by buying it, I'm not gaining anything. We're better off to transfer.
Let me walk that back. You can, you can basically give it to an LDC as an instrumentality of the village and the town for a dollar.
This is only government property, by the way.
That's right, that's right, that's right. I misspoke, because I was thinking of selling it to a developer, and that's.
In the scenario where it was transferred for appraised value?
No, 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 he's right. You don't have to have an appraisal, you just give it to them.
Are you obligated to use that methodology, give it to?
No, you could, you could have an appraisal if you want to, but the idea is, is that you transfer it to the LDC, and the LDC then demolishes the old building and develops it, and the LDC finances those costs.
So then, Marty, the advantage being is, the LDC then would have, to what Ken is saying, so what would happen first is we would create the board. You would then have this board would then take it for no value, I think there's a 10-day hearing period, I believe, if I remember what I read. They would then have to follow what we've incorporated also. So the LDC then would not have the right to then take that land and turn it into a roller skating rink. It has to follow the mandate of what the board is directed. So the mandate would be, this will be a municipal government center.
Specific purpose.
Specific purpose, thank you. And then they would also, they would incur the debt, and when I say they, that LDC would incur the debt of the demolition and reconstruction of the site and then eventual bonding and construction.
Again, that's all, the purpose of the LDC, which is limited, is set forth in the Certificate of Incorporation, it's filed with the state.
Can I ask a question about the creation of this LDC? In that, isn't one of the reasons why the controller's office would be comfortable with this creation is because here's an example of a town and a village working collaboratively to identify shared services? So if you were to go that route of the town finding a partner to construct an LDC with, then why would, would there be a risk of the controller's office having an issue, like where are the shared services, if you're pursuing a project on your own?
Well, shared services is the mutual purpose of the town and the village, and having a governmental center together is a, is a, is a shared purpose and a mutual purpose. The purpose of a local development corporation, which is now fully recognized by the controller, is lusting the burdens of government. So if it costs less money to build a facility using an LDC and going through issuing bonds of the village and the town, that, the purpose of the LDC is met, the purpose under state law is met.
Okay.
If you were doing it solely for the purpose of evading illegal requirements, and I have a client who wants not to do that so much, but has tried to find ways of getting around the Wicks law, for example, and we've told them, you know, to do a municipal purpose for themselves, that, that doesn't make a lot of sense, and you're likely to get criticized. But in the concept of a joint project and sharing services and doing something at less cost, that is a recognized purpose of the local development corporation, the controller said so.
And I need to go off of that statement that you just said, because it has been said publicly on record a number of times, that the LDC was being looked at specifically to circumvent Wicks law, and that is now on the record for this project for the town and the village. So, yes, I like the look on your face, so I would like.
It's in the newspaper today?
It's in, it's in the newspaper that we have, we are purposely doing this, purposely doing this LDC to circumvent Wicks law, and it has been stated at this table, it is in the newspaper, so where does that now put us from a legal perspective?
I think Ken said exactly the same thing. That's the, that's the reason why you would pursue it, but we have a very fair.
No, 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 no.
I understand, Susan, here's how you solve it. You solve that by doing exactly what Ken said. You make a show that this vehicle will save taxpayer money. You just build that model and show that this is the benefit, and you don't have to worry about what we're creating. You can demonstrate that.
Well, for the moment, but since none of us are included in any of the conversations as they're moving forward on this project, for the moment, the statement was made a number of times, we are looking to do an LDC for the purposes of circumventing the Wicks law, so we could save money while we build this building, okay? So that is there, that's in the paper, and I will testify to the truth of hearing it a number of times, okay? So now you're saying, which I understand, however, the controller is saying, well, we'll allow you to circumvent this law if you can prove that you're trying to do shared services for the benefit of the taxpayer, okay? So now, for the moment, we're just building a building with two municipalities sharing the space, as I understand it, but again, you know, there is no transparency, since we've moved to the LDC in terms of conversations about where this project's going, the building for the moment is not being designed from the perspective of, well, all of a sudden we're going to build it with shared space in mind, and we're going to get rid of certain departments or this or that, so we're having the benefit of sharing space, which would then make it okay for us to do the circumventing of the Wicks law. It's just potentially creating the opportunity down the road, when the two of us are in the building together, that at maybe some point, we'll decide, oh, there's opportunity to share space. So can you make that argument that we're doing this under the law as put forward by the controller?
That's a, that's a, that's a long question. If the primary purpose of what you're doing is to evade a legal requirement, that's one issue. That would not be what you're doing. The fact that you don't have to apply the Wicks law because you want to do something on a joint basis using an LDC doesn't mean that you're evading the law, it just doesn't apply. And if the press wants to take the position that you're, that you're, somebody wants to take the position that this whole thing is not being done for the purpose of.
The press, the press didn't take the position, the press recorded what was stated sitting at this table by one of our board members, who is working on this project, who specifically was asked, you know, and specifically stated more than once, that we are doing an LDC for the purposes of circumventing the Wicks law. The press did not report it wrong.
Right, and our treasurer, our village treasurer, will also testify that this municipal center will achieve us these shared services and substantial savings.
But I'm asking.
Susan, you don't have to hypothesize about what was in the paper, I'll read it. Town board member Marty Erwin has experience in developing municipal projects, that's not quite true, I don't believe I said it, if you listened to the tape, and said that an LDC or a PLA, a project layer agreement, could construction, could cut construction costs significantly because they are not subject to the state's Wicks law. I believe that's a factual statement.
It is.
So I'm not quite sure, Susan, what your point is.
I have a couple of questions. What was your point, sir?
My point was, my point was that it was stated a number of times, we were circumventing, quote unquote, Wicks law, okay? I don't care, I understand, I understand what he wrote, I'm telling you what I know I've heard, because I've said many times.
You said that he was reporting.
No, I got the fact that, well, I didn't hear, I didn't read what he actually wrote, but it doesn't matter. No, 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 no.
Geez!
No, Tom, no, I didn't read the paper, what I'm saying is, you have stated a number of times that you were trying to circumvent Wicks law, and I told you, you should not be saying you're trying to, but anyway, it doesn't matter.
You said it says in the paper, but you didn't read the paper?
No, 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 I know what you said at the table, Marty, okay? And I have said that to you.
Don has some questions.
You know what, I, but no, I want to then finish what, Tim, what you're saying, is for the moment, I'd like to understand how Nancy Baracco is saying we could prove that we're, that we're saving, that we're having shared, that, but right now, at least what I understand, the building's being done, it's not like we're combining the building department for the moment, so I don't, I don't know for the moment how we prove, going into the building, that we're going to.
Well, we could look at the architect's floor plans and see how space is shared, and Nancy, we can easily task Nancy to identify potential savings immediately and.
Well, I imagine through, maybe through course of.
What would happen if the village did their own thing?
No, 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 I understand, there's probably savings from electricity and blah, 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 and all the other external type of things.
Because town hall is going to have to be replaced eventually, and village will replace, so you're going to end up with savings by not having the village do the rest of the structures.
And I think, and Marty, I'll ask you, just because you've done development too then, and I'm sorry, only the Wicks law piece was picked up, I haven't read the paper either, but I think another advantage, and Ken, maybe you could help, is, the other advantage are, is you, you're not using all the procurement laws that we are beholden to as local government.
Well, that's the Wicks law, yes.
And beyond just the Wicks law, though, too, you can also not have, you'd be doing, they still may be doing competitive bidding, though, and your competitive bids may require that.
The LDC isn't subject to competitive bidding.
But you may require.
They are subject to prevailing wage.
But he could set it up to competitive bidding, and in a competitive bidding, you could require prevailing wage. My understanding is we could negotiate or bid, and we could use a GC or a CM.
That's right.
Can you negotiate a better deal than a prevailing wage deal for social labor agreement?
You might. And when you say you might, you've seen those, you've seen that actually happen.
Well, that's what a PLA is, you negotiate a labor agreement with the union of what terms you're going to come to, to build the building and make it cost-effective for the municipality without undercutting the union.
And another advantage to the LDC structure is, as Mr. Bond explained earlier, is that the LDC can issue bonds that can sell at a premium versus the general obligation bonds that the municipalities would issue.
No, 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 I want to make sure, you know, they would sell at a slightly higher interest rate.
They would return a higher rate to the investors.
It might be slightly more expensive, because they're not supported by taxes, supported by annual appropriations. That's been, that's been the trend, but the difference is miniscule, and it doesn't, it hasn't had a chilling effect on the cost savings.
Can you explain, if it's a higher interest rate that they're selling it at, doesn't that cost technically come back to the taxpayers who are really, at the end of the day, paying for?
Without getting into too much technical like lingo here, what normally happens is that these bonds sell with a premium, in other words, it's par plus a bunch of money that's contributed. And that bunch of money then goes into a pot that's used to pay the debt service on the bonds, and it also brings the net interest cost down. So when you compare the net interest cost to doing a general obligation bond, they're almost identical. The coupon, which is the stated interest rate, would be a higher on the LDC bonds because they are revenue bonds as opposed to tax-supported bonds, which are general obligations, they sell to slightly different investors.
So then there's no advantage to the municipality in terms of the cost of its debt service?
There's, there's no.
There's an advantage to the investors.
There's no negligible additional cost in issuing the LDC bonds, that's right.
I haven't said much this meeting, and Dan hasn't, and Rebecca hasn't, and Tom has on the tape, but you haven't much, so if we could maybe jump in.
I found it on the table, Paul, because I didn't have anything else to say.
Okay. But I have a couple of questions, I'd like to kind of jump in here. So there, Ken, you mentioned several options that were potential, rent, the town and the village issuing bonds, an LDC, using an existing nonprofit, we talked about working through Ulster County. If pressed to, could you make any of those options work, they're all possible?
Yep.
Okay. So, and the statement was made when we were talking about going through Ulster County, the UC DC, why would the town and the village want to be beholden to the county? And I accept that, I wouldn't want, wouldn't want that scenario. In an LDC scenario, where the board of directors was comprised of three town members and two village members, would that not be a situation where the village would be beholden to the town in the same way? Or I guess another question is, how does that construct protect the long-term interests of the village, if the village is a minority member of the board of directors?
Well, there might be certain issues in which you need to have a unanimous vote by the members, by both, in other words, a board of directors meeting is going to be always a majority, but certain things have to be approved by the members, which means it comes back to each board to be approved. That's how you, that's how each municipality keeps control over the.
Ken, may I, so we sat here eight days ago, and our two boards agreed to a structure where there would be a steering committee, which could end up being the board of directors for an LDC, and the idea would be two electeds from the town board, two electeds from the village board, and then an individual at large who was selected by both the town and village board.
By those four.
By those.
I would just like to just.
So that, the thinking was, the thinking was, a five-person, an odd number, steering committee or LDC board.
Correct.
To deal with exactly, you know, what we're describing here.
Right.
Trying to eliminate the conflict of having too much from, too much input from one municipality versus the other.
That's right.
Or having an even number. The only thing I might consider, based on your comments earlier, is you were suggesting having more community members versus electeds, but I just wanted to clarify, let's get Don to continue with his questions.
What was certainly spoken about, you know, in this discussion, was a construct where the town would have three members and the village would have two, and that, that does concern me, so I'll just ask the question. I'd like to also, we formed a process where there is an executive committee, which is comprised of Dan and myself and Marty and Tim, and there have been numerous spirited discussions of the Wicks law. And I think to say that that wouldn't be a primary goal of the LDC approach is disingenuous, based on my interpretation of the discussions I've heard and participated in. I am offended personally, and do not advocate and do not want to be any part of an effort to go around the Wicks law, just personally, my vote. I, in a private conversation with, with the supervisor-elect, and I want, he can speak for himself, I would think if you asked him, you'd find the same thing. So it's a, it's, I don't want to be any part of a project where there's an infallible rat on the job site because we're going around the Wicks law, and that's what I envision. And it's very distasteful to me, and if that's one of the primary goals of the LDC approach, I, you know, that's not, that doesn't sell it to me. Two other points. There was a statement made in public comment, I'd just like some clarification. As the executive of the village of New Pauls, Tim, are you committed to long-term survival of the village of New Pauls?
I think the comment that Josh made was that the mayor said that there might not be a village in 10 years. I would also add that there might not be a town in 10 years. Sure, we should absolutely be mindful of the possibility that something could change. That was the point that I was making. What I think we need to design, and what we are designing, and if you look at the floor plans, is we're designing an efficient, from both an energy perspective as well as operations of town and village government building, that will work immediately and for as long as we need it.
I, I've made the observation before, when you come off the thruway and you drive through the portion of Main Street that is the town of New Pauls. through the portion of Main Street that is the Town of New Paltz, it looks like any town USA, I mean, and not in a bad way, but there's a Burger King, and a McDonald's, and a, you know, shopping centers, and when you get to the village line, that's when, what everyone, at least in my mind, thinks of as the, as the historic and beautiful New Paltz, that, you know, that some of us cherish. The village and the town have different personalities and different agendas, and I certainly would like to commit myself to the long-term existence of the Village of New Paltz as an elected trustee. Lastly, I share the observations of the supervisor, current supervisor, this former supervisor, that in the history of New Paltz, there have been conflicts, when the town and the village have attempted to do things jointly. I think that's a non-controversial statement, it's a statement of fact, and as I understand the LDC process, the vehicle for conflict resolution is a lawsuit, and, okay, I just wanted to, is that, is that, did I understand that correctly, Ken?
Do you have an arbitration provision?
You know, we're getting into the weeds on things here that were details that need to be worked out later, but, you know, I would simply say the essentiality of the town and the village both requiring offices and having these offices, you know, I think augers well for requiring cooperation between the two boards, plus, the oversight of the use of the facility would be by an independent board, which is the LDC, so the first place you'd go is with respect to any kind of conflicts or fight between the two municipalities, would be with the, with the Local Development Corporation Board, which has representatives from both the town and the village, plus independent directors. You know, I'm not aware, and there are a number of communities that have joint facilities like this, I'm not aware that there have been lawsuits by one user of the facility, municipal user against another, that would force an issue that you'd wanna litigate. As I said, one, the corporation could not evict, which couldn't evict one of the municipalities, and neither could one municipality evict the other municipality, I mean, they both have to use it. So, if that is such a huge problem, then, you know, any way you would wanna approach this, whether it be under the local finance law, with the joint financing of general obligation bonds, or using an LDC approach, if that's such a huge risk, then, you know, perhaps the project should never be undertaken.
Right, there's nothing unique about an LDC structure that would end up with more litigation risk versus any other--
Yeah, I mean, actually, the LDC acts as a buffer, in a sense, between the two municipalities.
I mean, you see litigation, and it just happened again, there's litigation that's happening right now, I apologize, I believe it was Highland School District over them building the school there, I mean, most major projects end in litigation, usually not with the communities--
Were they suing the contractors?
With the contractors.
Well, that's typical.
So, but that's probably what's gonna end up happening, and, you know, I think what I'm wondering is, and Ken, you know, need to answer this, is, and I'm sorry, Don, when I get off the thruway and I drive into this community, one of the first things I see is a nice welcoming sign made out of stone, that says, "Welcome to New Paltz." On weekends, I see beautiful signs that indicate all the beautiful farms we have here. I drive a little further, I see a planning board that worked very, very hard to put up a gas station that meets the character of the community, that they said they would never build, and yet it got built, out of stone and Mac Jean architecture. I then get a little bit further, up to the rise on the bridge, and I see beautiful Schwanggunk Ridge and Mohawk. So, I think it's the whole community I look at, and I'm sorry you don't see the beauty until you hit the village line, I see the beauty throughout the community. What I'm wondering, Ken, is, are we maybe better suited then, if it's going to end up in what people feel are problems, do we form this, it's not a political subdivision, it's its own corporation we're forming, should the town form it? As the, and I, let me define it, to form it, and then use the partial model you said, and we make an agreement to rent to the village, could that stop, and also, since it is not a political subdivision, I see your logic also, and maybe there should not be any government officials on it, and then it is even beyond any type of governmental, so to speak, control, that you have no government officials on it, let the LDC be formed by the town, the town develops it, let the LDC run it, and we rent, the LDC then rents to the village.
And the town.
And the town.
On the question of a single-member LDC running to the other municipality, I think you would go down that road and finally come to the conclusion that you're forming the LDC unnecessarily, for the simple reason that the only members of the LDC are gonna be people from the town, or people that the town appoints, the town board appoints, because the village isn't gonna be part of it.
No, but the village is part of it, because the village residents are part of the town.
And then also, and the other part being, is you form it because then you can use other vehicles for financing, you're not, you're doing non-competitive bidding, possibly, there's many things that this non-government organization will be able to do, and be able to operate, to which a government is more beholden to.
I think the point, though, is just that ultimately, no matter what structure you choose, you have to learn to get along, whether it's a landlord-tenant relationship, or a joint ownership--
No, I'm--
It's just about getting along.
Trying to think back, I'm going, I would have serious Wicks Law problems if the village or the town issued general obligation bonds, and then tried to let contracts simply with the LDC. That is an issue we've definitely down the road on, and we don't like that, so--
Even though that's lessening the burden on government for the good of the public?
Well, what's it doing? It's not doing anything, it's not, it's not providing any financial assistance, you just have the town and the village issuing bonds.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm trying to think back on these various--
No, maybe, yeah.
--permutations. If you're, I mean, if, so my point is, if you're gonna have a single-member LDC, just with the town or the village, and rent to the other, I think the LDC may be superfluous, in which case, you go back to the basics of local finance law and the Wicks Law, you build it, and you enter into a lease with the other municipality with a non-determinant clause, and it's all right.
I know, I have a couple of questions, but I know that Dan, Tom, and Don--
Don has a couple of questions, right? I'm almost done, I'm almost done.
No, that's okay, I don't wanna talk until--
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you very much. Actually, I've lost one of the points I was gonna make, I think that, oh, I wanted to, I wanted to just respond, I didn't say, Jeff, that I don't see the beauty, I said the town and the village were different, that's a, that's a quite a different thing. Should've, should've made notes, should've made notes, I just lost the point, after all that back and forth. So, come back to me, please.
Ken, because we're hearing that there are challenges with this LDC approach, and because we wish to continue to share services, it's just how do we come together, what's the form of our understanding? Would, would the same cost efficiencies be gained if the, if there was one owner, be it the town or the village, the other is a tenant, and that owner negotiated with a general contractor who entered into a PLA? Would the cost, the hard costs, the construction costs, be the same as the discussion we have been having with the LDC as the conduit?
Well, if the, if the town and the village were going to undertake the contracts on its own, the Wicks Law would apply.
Even if there was a general contractor and you entered into a PLA?
You can't have a contract, general contractor, you have to have separate contracts, that's what the Wicks Law is about. So, the only, you know, I don't wanna start, like I'm saying, to get around the Wicks Law, but the only--
In a way, I knew the answer, so I--
You'd have to, you'd have to use the LDC, and having the LDC being used only by one municipality and leased to another, that's a slide over to it, it was a joint project, and it's a sharing services project, now it looks like it's a public purpose. And one other thing, to kind of address Susan's point, which, which is that, all of this that I've been talking about, if you were to do this, would, of course, be documented with resolutions and determinations by the board, and I've been writing those suckers for about forty years. Case law in New York and every other law, unless there's something colorably illegal about it, courts are gonna uphold the determinations of local legislative bodies. So, you know, this being attacked, the way, and I wouldn't be throwing this out as something to think about, if I thought it would be attacked and thrown out, but in this state, I think it would, I think it would be upheld on the question of violating the Wicks Law, if it's structured properly.
What would happen, Ken, if we followed the documents that you've drafted for us, wherein it says, "Subsequent to the creation of the LDC, the municipalities will enter into an MOU." Obviously, we're hearing a lot of concerns about the success of the negoti, of that, of the, being able to successfully negotiate the MOU or IME.
Yeah.
What would happen if the LDC is formed, and there comes a point in time when the party said, "We are going to fail, we give up"?
Well, this is the, this was the conversation I was having with Will, your village attorney, there is no cost of the filing fee to, and we have some time in on this, to forming the Local Development Corporation and filing the Certificate of Corporation, you have to have resolutions by both boards, but you never have to use it. If you're thinking of using it, and you start doing a lot of other stuff, and then, you know, after the fact created, that's probably an inefficient use. If you're going to consider it, and you think it's a good idea, and you just, and you just haven't worked out the details on the IME, that's perfectly okay, that's what the resolutions say, we're forming an LDC, we're gonna create it, here are the bylaws, we can appoint members and so forth, now you all have to sit down and do the hard work, which is to work out the terms of the IME. If those terms are never agreed to, corporation can just be put out of business.
From a practical perspective, and I'm town board, but I focus on this effort, so among us, I'm the one that perhaps reads the most, or chats the most, on the town side, Tim on the village side, and we are at a point where we've engaged an architect, he's doing his very first part of the design process called programming, going out and talking to department heads, gathering data, so that he can then do his paperwork. We will be at a point in approximately six weeks, where he has finished his schematic design drawings, the first phase of the architectural process, and we will have used fifty thousand dollars that the town board has properly appropriated for the purposes of the architect completing the schematic design phase. So, when I look at it from the viewpoint of, I wanna keep this project going forward, and I'm the one that's focusing on it, I say, come approximately six weeks from now, the architect is going to need to be given direction, stop or continue, can't be given direction to continue unless there's an identified source of funds that can be used to pay him, or you couldn't enter into that contract. If the LDC approach is used, six weeks from now, will the LDC be able to tell the architect to continue, because the LDC has identified a source of funds?
The source of funds for the LDC, until it issues bonds for the whole project, is gonna have to be the two members. The two members will then be reimbursed by the LDC bonds, once they're issued, that's the way it works.
And would, would the contributions from each of the two members be proportionate to the percentages that they agree to?
Yeah, it would be, and if you don't have a full-blown IME by that point, you make your best guess.
Considering the schedule that I just hypothesized, well, it's not hypothesized, that I put forward, it seems to me that it would not be practical to first form the LDC, and then get to the business of negotiating the terms of the MOU or IME, because even today, six weeks before I reach this point, there has not yet been a consensus that I'm aware of, by the village board, as to whether they wish to be a fifty percent owner or a seventy-five, twenty-five percent owner, and I see that as threshold to being able to go forward with other negotiations. So, I am putting out on the table a concern that I have, that I believe is very practical, it's not--
You're right.
It's not anybody individual that I'm talking about.
You, you, you need to come up with at least, for costs that are gonna be incurred, and the architects and soft costs, lawyers and so forth, their typical upfronts, those are things where you need to have some kind of basic understanding as to what the rough apportionment's gonna be, adjustments to come, that, that needs to be done. As I said, the LDC can be formed and put aside until you actually need it for doing the financing and for the operation of the facility, but it probably, in my, in my recommendation would be to form the thing, get it done, get it over with, and then, and then use it, and have its costs reimbursed by the town and the village.
I would recommend forming, I would recommend forming a corporation spending money to do that until the commitment is solidified between the village and the town, and that's what we really need to spend our time on.
Well, then--
Because you can form a corporation overnight.
Right, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think, you know, that this is rocket time, in terms of giving out a proportionate share of soft costs, that would be my first thought. And the second thought is, once that's done, the LDC can operate on a preliminary basis until it goes forward. If you can't get an IME written, you put the, you put the LDC aside, and go off and finance it all the way.
Don, I'm gonna ask you to do me a favor, and just try to listen to what I'm asking, before you sort of like say anything, because I'm trying to get to an answer that might make me comfortable and you comfortable, so, and it goes back to something Ken had said Don's concern has been that he believes that we have to have, quote, fifty-fifty ownership, because he wants equal say in the building, okay? And I feel really strongly that, from a town perspective, which Don agrees, as a supervisor, if he was me, he would say the same thing, for us to have, you know, to have seventy-five percent of the building, probably have seventy-five percent of the cost, but to share ownership and decision-making fifty-fifty, is the stupidest deal the town could ever enter into, and I will not enter under my administration unless four people vote me against me, or three people vote against me, and then so be it, I've been outplayed. So, I just think it's the stupidest thing in the world for the town, who's gonna have seventy-five percent of the building, seventy-five percent of the expenses, to then let the village have fifty percent veto power over what we do, it's just as crazy. I understand that Don feels from his perspective, and he's a village trustee, and from his perspective, he wants, quote, "The power to have equal say." One of the things you said earlier, which, if we play it out again, and I wanna then go even just to the creation of the LDC in a second, is no matter how the LDC is created, so say it's three town people, preferably not elected officials, and I'd like to get into that in a second, but, for the moment, three appointed town people, two appointed village people, for the moment, so the LDC, there's more power, quote, to the town, which I believe there should be, because it's their project in terms of more expense, but ultimately, to really do anything, they only have to go back to the both of the boards to get approval to do things--
Ratification.
To get ratification of anything that they do, so at that point, the village board does have the power to step in, just as equally as the town has the power to step in and say, "No."
But, but, but that is true of all corporations, there are meetings of directors, and there are meetings of members, and the members of the corporation are the municipalities. So, you may want to have the members have practically no power on anything, and have most of the decisions made by the directors without ratification by the members, that's possible, but this is something you have to work out.
No, no, we understand that, that's part of, and in a sense, I'm sorry we're burdening you with this, but that is the part of the problem of how we move forward to potentially do the LDC, and how we create the LDC.
Right.
Do we do ownership with them leasing, you know, because that takes that all away, for all intensive purposes--
These are things that go under the intermunicipal--
I understand that, but, but where I agree with Kevin is, I'm certainly not gonna vote to create an LDC, until I understand what we're agreeing to--
That's fine.
You know, but, but anyway, so I'm just trying to, so I'm just trying to get to the thing of the area with, where Don and I agree and disagree, I mean, but we're disagreeing because of our roles--
Representing our--
Right, exactly, but we're, but we're agreeing in terms of--
But I disagree, you're not representing the, your constituents in the village with this hard-line position.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yes, you are.
You know, Tim, that's absolutely wrong-- You know, Tim, that's absolutely wrong. The A fund is decided by the village, by the town board. The town board controls the A fund, okay? And so for the village to have 50% say of how the A fund gets spent, isn't, it's, we're still representing the village residents. The village residents are town A fund residents. Their money comes out of the A fund also. But ultimately, again, where, you know, I mean, look, we said this once before, you know, and you didn't want to do that, I will sign the deal right now with Don. We'll share this building equally, we'll be equal partners, and every expense will be shared equally, 50% A fund, 50%, you know, through the village. Got a deal? Then I'm not screwing the village residents based on what you just said.
Yeah, you are screwing the village residents.
But I'm screwing them either way. Either way, I'm screwing them, Tim.
The way, the way you structure this deal is exactly the same way we currently pay for our municipal buildings.
75-25, but you're asking-
Right, and you and the, and the town pays for its own municipal center, and you use A fund to pay for that, and that's exactly what you will continue to do in this municipal bill.
I understand that, and I agree. However, I don't believe that another government should have 50% say in the town and how they spend 75% of the money. And I don't think if the positions were reversed, that Don would sit here and say, "Susan, I'm going to like, you know, let you have 50% say on whatever the village spends."
We're just-
He's not going to agree to that.
We're building office spaces.
Or are you?
We're building office spaces.
I understand that.
How often are we going to be making big decisions in terms of capital expenditures? We're making one decision to build a joint municipal center. We've all in agreement, we need to do this, it's in the best interest of the community, it's in the best interest of the taxpayer. So to have a committee where we get to make other decisions collaboratively is just good business. It's just a good way to, to work together. You're setting yourself up for failure when you have one board with an outweighed say. It does not make sense.
I don't believe, I don't believe we're setting ourselves up for failure. I think we're being wise as-
We had this conversation last meeting.
We had this conversation last meeting. We agreed, we agreed, your board agreed-
No, no, our board, in theory, agreed, we did not vote, and I spoke with some of-
You actually did vote.
No, we didn't take, we didn't take an actual vote, you took a vote, we didn't take an actual vote.
Why don't you say-
But anyway, we didn't, but anyway, it doesn't matter.
Those are your board, in a different, if we were to do that type of steering committee idea-
Well, I'd like to, I didn't, I didn't finish my-
With two villages, two towns, and one at-large, is that no longer on the table for the town board?
That's a good way for the board of directors to be set up.
So I want to ask you a quick, well, I do-
They're not elected officials, but they would be-
Well, that's the next question I wanted, because right now, the way I see this, right now, the way I see the decisions being made by the people who are driving this project are, that it was going to be set up is two elected officials from the village, it would be the executive committee, two elected officials from the village, two elected officials from the town, and one outside person, which I personally think is the wrong way to do it. I don't think it should be elected officials, but, oh, I think I would have, I mean, well, first of all, I don't agree with the two and the two and the one, but that's beside the point, but if I'm outvoted, I'm outvoted, it doesn't matter, I'm going to be gone in five weeks. So truthfully, we could let the next board, the town board, decide this, and I would be more than happy and put this on hold till then. But regardless, I just don't think it should be elected officials, because those two elected officials who are now on the board of directors for the LDC have more say in the building-
So let's say it's not elected officials, it's two individuals selected by the-
You must have at least one in each community. You don't want to have the LDC go off on its own.
Right, so it's a seven-person board now. You have one from the village, one from the town, and then the village identifies two individuals, the town identifies two individuals, and then we agree on an at-large. So now we have a majority of community members. Where is the town board with that type of structure?
I would think, Susan, that would leave the town and the village with less control rather than gaining more control.
Were you in the county legislator when they created the LDC?
Yes, I did, and I voted against it.
Well, we got that straight.
That's how I met Ken Bond.
That's how we met.
That's how I met Ken Bond, and I actually voted against the LDC at the county legislature.
Whoa, Susan, get your bags ready.
Well, I voted against the county executive forming the LDC, and I believe that the legislator-
You voted against selling the hospital for the elves.
Right, well, actually, it was because it was a, it was an LDC formed by the executive, not by the legislature.
Okay, I would love to know where the town board is, whether it's a five-person or a seven-person steering committee, board of directors for an LDC. Where are you guys at?
My position hasn't changed since the last meeting, assuming we're going forward with the LDC structure at all.
Which is what?
I would like a bit of clarification. I understand, it's directed to this very point. Did the town board members not vote at that meeting to-
I don't think we have to, I think we should try to work cooperatively.
I would love to work cooperatively.
So, to answer the question, I've applied conceptually with a structure where you have one elected official from each municipality and then two appointed from each side. The question is, the odd, the odd number.
Yes.
Would that odd number then be appointed by the vote of those existing board members?
It would be appointed by both boards.
Okay, so then both boards have to agree on that last person.
That's correct.
And I thought that's what we discussed last Tuesday.
No, we discussed that among our board, the LDC board, that we would appoint the fifth member.
Yeah.
The village board would appoint, the town board would appoint.
But it doesn't work, then that's fine, I'm happy to clarify.
We haven't talked to you today.
Yeah.
We didn't really talk about what, how at-large would occur.
But just the idea is the at-large is supposed to be a person that, we, whether it's the village, he's the swing vote, and both, both village and town are comfortable with that individual.
To answer your question, Tom, I don't, conceptually, have a problem with that way of operating, okay? But there's other details that we tend to look at in terms of, you know, staggered boards, as you discussed, what's their term? Can they be fired for cause or not? I mean, you really, once these people are in, if they're competent, you want to keep them in. Indeed.
I think that that happens to be in the draft, although we told by Ken that that's just the draft, it's not cast in stone, but I think that's in there.
But the real question here tonight is, what's the commitment going forward? It's not necessarily how many members, that those things are important too, but what's the commitment? Is there a commitment? Maybe, that's the first question, is there a commitment? If there is, what's the nature of the commitment?
And what's the structure used to get to your objective?
Because the commitment then defines the terms of the agreement, and then you can agree on what things are important, that has to go back to the membership, and which things the boards of the LDC can handle themselves.
And the village board has made that commitment by resolution and vote twice.
We have made that commitment.
It's just a question of-
To participate, to not, not the terms of the-
To jointly build, occupy a joint municipal center.
On what percentage of these, I mean, that's the-
Well, that's the next question.
Okay, so-
But your question was, are we committing?
Here's a, here's a point.
It's the working out the details, it's not important.
It seems to me that the big issue here is who's going to pay what percentage of costs, right? If that's the, if that's the immediate issue.
No, I think, and everybody can correct me if I'm wrong, right now, as I understand, the town pays 75%, the village would pay 25% based on the ratable type of sense and the usage of the building, but all decisions would be technically 50-50.
That's my understanding of roughly what we're looking at.
Well, that's how your board of directors would be set up.
Right, exactly.
You'd have, you'd have a weighted board of directors. But in terms of the actual costs, if you want to use an existing formula that you have as an interim methodology, that's something that you can go forward on. You're not going to-
No, I know, I understand it, but there hasn't been per se, it really doesn't matter what I think.
You're not, you're not going to get a full bar, a full-blown intermunicipal agreement done overnight. That's going to take a while. But you can get certain basic things, like who's going to pay what percentage of costs, you can get that out of the way pretty quickly.
And I think that's what we've been discussing several times now as a village board, and Kevin's looking for a village board response to that discussion.
Yeah, and just another section in here, when you develop this agreement, you could identify the things that are beholden to both boards, which you then have to go back to the boards for a vote, and the things that aren't that important.
I mean, the stuff in the bylaws, the way that-
Right.
Sure.
But they can be specific, so that you have this balance of power, that's what they did when they decided to form the United States Congress. You had to balance the power between the big states and the little states, and that's what we're doing right here. We should be able to agree on that.
I think actually Susan created or offered a very good example of a challenging decision point at the last meeting, an example of something that the boards or the steering committee would have to think about is, let's say, either the town or the village wanted to add an addition. You know, that seems like a major decision and where you would probably need a majority, or not a majority, you'd need a unanimous response. That would be my understanding of how you would get comfortable as the two municipalities with major decisions like that example.
Why do we need unanimous?
Let's flush that a little.
Sure.
Okay, so, I agree, I disagree in some respects, because let's say that the village vetoed that, let's say the village vetoed an expansion plan that the town needed.
Yeah.
The town then should be able to override that veto if they paid for the cost of those improvements. So, so your scenario would require a little bit more in terms of thinking it all the way through.
Sounds like-
You see, these are the kinds of things-
That's a great addition, yes.
These are the things that go into the document, I mean, it's just, this is our very point.
Sure, we know, absolutely.
But then again, this isn't, you're not going to solve all this tonight, this is going to take a few weeks. This is how it could be overdone. It won't take months.
But it's important for the boards to understand the intricacies of all the decisions that's debated so far, so they can be made. You know, and a lot of people here aren't familiar with not-for-profits, or membership interests, or shareholder interests.
No, it takes, it takes more than one meeting to get everybody to go in the same direction or to decide not to go at all.
So I think we have kind of two questions on the table right now. We're looking for the village to respond to, are we comfortable with having a minority stake in this deal? And then we're also looking for a response from the town about this concept of an split, an even number split between the town and the village, and then this at-large person that we agree to.
This is the board of directors.
Yes.
And I think it should-
That presumes that we're all in agreement on-
You feel it should be five?
More than five.
Oh, more than five? Right, so would seven work?
Seven, seven's a good number.
And then seven speaks to that idea of, we only have one elected, and then you have the majority of the individuals on that board being community members.
Depoliticizing it.
Sure.
Doesn't this presume that each of our two boards would have at least three votes supporting the creation of an LDC?
Well, you're not going to appoint people that aren't going to be in favor of your side.
That's why I don't think it depoliticizes anything.
Well, no, no, on paper-
I meant as part of our discussions and decisions this evening, do we want?
Just because you appoint somebody doesn't mean, just like the Supreme Court.
I was going to say, the US Supreme Court.
Okay, thank God, thank God. A lot of the Supreme Court members did not support the visions of the people who appointed them.
But your only chance of depoliticizing, I think, is via that at-large individual that we both agree on. That's, that's the most important appointment.
We have had success in depoliticizing some committees and commissions and boards, so it is possible. And I guess, and I just asked Kevin, is, what are we really fighting over here? What major decisions are we going to be making? Are we, I mean, color swatches for carpets? I don't understand what are our big, like, the fight is over the financing here, not even fight, that's the discussion. So I'll be honest with you, I'm fine with a five-member or a seven-member. I really want to get down to the next couple of weeks from Ken as what is the percentage of paying, where's the money coming from?
I have to, I'm sorry, I just, if I have to-
Because I don't know what else, I mean, Tim, what are we going to be fighting?
Oh, Jim, I'd like to respond to that, I have to respond to that, Jeff, because quite frankly, we haven't even gotten into the meat of the potatoes of what the plan is going to look like. Right now, two people are working on the plan, giving the information to the architect, none of us sitting at this table other than two people. I don't know, Don, do you really, how involved have you been or?
A lot less involved than I thought I would be if the village board voted that I would be.
Okay, so, you know, but I certainly know I know nothing, other than the fact that I came to a meeting last week and found out all of a sudden an LDC was on the table when I voted to move this project forward with the town owning the building.
I had the same experience, Rem.
Exactly, okay, so, so unfortunately, right now, a lot of things are happening without any of us knowing, okay? So, right now, the architect is laying out what the building looks like. We have not even had any input whatsoever into how this building is being laid out. When all of a sudden he comes with the first drawing and he sits down and puts that first drawing down, you might be the first person, Jeff, who's going to say, "I don't want this, what, are you crazy?" Okay? And Tom is going to say, "But I absolutely want that," and we're going to start fighting from day one. And I will, and I am, and I'm not saying that this could have happened, I'm just saying to say, what are we going to fight about? I mean, these two boards, we, on our own board, we find a lot to fight about, you guys find a lot to fight about. As two boards, since 1996, okay, we have fought about more yellow pool more times than I'd like to, you know, even talk about, until we finally, finally got to a point where we identified, you know, what capital is, and we all agreed to it, and quite frankly, the town gave up a bunch of things because we couldn't fight Sally Rhodes anymore, you know, and we just said, "Fine, have it your way," you know, kind of safe, and we concretized a, we concretized a, you know, what's capital, now we don't fight about it anymore, thank God, but it took, I don't know how many, 40, 50 years, so, you know, we hadn't even begun to start, you know-
Well, this town building committee, the individuals who are here have seen the initial sketches from Harowitz.
No, I haven't seen anything.
You haven't? Because I've been in the room when you've looked at them, but-
But we haven't seen layouts of the interior of the building.
Yes, you have.
Well, not the ones that were proposed.
We had a discussion last week, we talked about putting a bunch of people in cubicles in a lot, in a lot of space, but I didn't see a drawing of that.
You talked about putting town and village employees of the same department in some sort of huge space with cubicles. That's what we talked about. I didn't see a drawing of that. I heard you talk about it. Did you see a drawing?
I think it might have been me that you heard talking about.
The building committee about that?
No, because I questioned you about, I asked you about people working side by side, and I, we talked, I don't want to go into detail, but we talked about the conflicts that people having the same job could have, working side by side? And you said, "People have to get over it." Can we keep it that general? I don't want, I don't, I don't want to specify, but you know what we were talking about. And, but I didn't see a drawing of how that would be.
Next Tuesday, the architect will be prepared, if Dave is willing to call, this was based on a discussion I had with him at three o'clock this afternoon, and I then went to a Walco River Watershed Alliance meeting, and then to here I haven't had time to circulate a memo to you folks and to others. Next Tuesday, he's proposing that he is, will be prepared to show us some preliminary sketches of the floor plans based on his interviews to date with the justice court and today with the police, and already with some members working of our staff.
Do we have a contract with him at this point?
No.
Well, I know he's working, but we don't even have a contract with him.
And he is aware of that. It is prepared, it's been reviewed by council. There are, I think, three phrases that are being proposed to be modified, and it'll be on our agenda for tomorrow night's board meeting to be signed.
We also saw floor plans that Joe Horowitz sketched out during the deliberations when we were looking to select an architect.
But that was very early on, and that was just examples, it wasn't a concrete thing of what we were going to do. He sketched out from the outside, we, he, all he could do at that point-
He sketched out floor plans.
Floor plans of just the size of the building and parking, but it wasn't, there weren't specifics as to where offices would be or how it would be laid out.
And Marty-
And we talked about-
Marty has been working-
Because he didn't have any information at that time to say where anything might possibly be other than-
Well, no, but you had said we had seen it, we haven't seen that yet, right?
It was just concept studies.
Right.
The town hired him for $2,000 to do concept studies on the site, and he went beyond that, and not just looked at the site and drew a rectangle on it for the building, he went further than that and said, "Here are the things that are going to go in it." And now he has started, starting to do what is, been described by me to you and to others that in this first phase, the first couple of weeks is called programming, and he goes out and he talks to everybody and he gathers data and he comes back, and now he can draw lines that show the space.
I thought you said we had seen drawings. All right, a question.
All right, a question. Marty, I don't know whether the previous committee, which included Don and the mayor, I will gladly call a meeting next Tuesday, okay, if that's appropriate. By the way, I, I hope that we also added another person, the person who's been attending from the village. What? Addie, okay, to the committee, or the town did. And so we, we can have the meeting if, and cover that if the village and town board feels as appropriate as to, to do that. And I'm saying I'd do that, but I, you know, I want concurrence from the town and the village boards that says, "Yeah, go ahead and do it."
In response to Kevin and Tim looking for some additional information from the village on where we stand, I'd call your attention to item number nine. We will be having a conversation as the village board tonight. I'm sure those will be the issues we'll be discussing, so hopefully there'll be more clarity.
Well, can we discuss it now while we're all here? I think that's kind of.
Oh, I, I thought we were following the agendas. There was a lot, a lot I had on the subject that I hadn't said.
Okay, so let's.
We haven't heard at all from Rebecca and Tom yet. I just don't want to dominate the meeting.
I do want to say that my recollection, my recollection of the outcome of the last meeting was that we had both boards agreed to a five-person committee. Two members from each of our boards, the fifth member to be chosen by them. Not that they would be the constitutors of a corporation, but that they would constitute, for the time being, I believe we use the term, an executive committee. That they would then do the work of an executive committee and bring back to the boards for our consideration something like, if not exactly, and I would have hoped exactly, a draft IMA that our boards would consider and vote on. That would then move us to the next phase, which might be the constitution of a corporation. We would be on our way at any rate. I thought we had agreed on that. It was my distinct impression that we voted to do that. That you would be one, the mayor would be one, I think Marty would be one.
Damn.
Damn. And then a fifth person would be chosen by you four to constitute an executive committee. Not to do nothing, but not to constitute a corporation. To come back to these boards with a proposal that probably would be in the form of an intermunicipal agreement, which then would form the basis for our going forward to form a corporation. That's what I understood that we had already done. A lot of this conversation, I think, has been off the mark because we already did that work. We, I think that our board has already itself expressed very often the absolute commitment to go forward as partners with the town in the development of this new municipal center. I think that there has been a general consensus that a 75%, 25% occupation of the building was highly likely. Some of that based upon the information that we received from the preliminary work done by the architect. Some of it by our own general understanding of the amount of space that we would need, given the amount of space that we currently use. We could change that if, if a five-member executive committee came back and said, "No, 26, 74, 27, 73." We would be open to any modification based upon a reasonable conclusion done by the members of that executive committee. That's what I've been waiting for. I'm hoping that that's what we're going to see from you, not some other thing. So I believe that we already did a great deal of the agreeing to get off the dime. And I believe that tonight, we're still on the dime, unfortunately. We're not off the dime. I also want to say two things as points of personal privilege. I have never suggested, never mind proposed, that any process we adopt would be done to circumvent any law, including the Wicks law. One, I have never, I have more to say. I have never at this or any formal meeting of the town and village board members heard any member suggest that a process we would adopt be done to circumvent the Wicks law. I say this regardless of the accusations or implications of statements to the contrary that have been made tonight.
Carol, you got to use a microphone.
I can just shout.
No, no, you cannot.
Can I just clarify something? May I clarify something? These microphones are not for us in the room. These microphones are for our recorded record. And if, if someone watches a meeting where someone isn't speaking on, through the microphone, they cannot hear what you're saying. So that's why it's important for us to all use a microphone.
My question is, didn't the town board last night, last month, appoint Agnes Deveraux to be the fifth person at the? So the fifth person's already been appointed as far as the town is concerned. And that, and Agnes had been on a meeting with our committee for several months, and the town board voted last month to appoint her.
That was for a different, that was for a different function.
Different function. That's not, that's not the, that was something, that's our committee, not, not what they're, that's not what they're doing.
Rebecca, did you have a comment?
Yes.
Can I just say one thing to Don, just to, just instantly, on the, on the rat thing? We're all pro-union. We were never looking to avoid the union. We always thought what it would avoid are subcontractors. So when something goes bad, as example with the Moreyello Pool, that there'd be one contractor to be held responsible. But we were, we always talked about an agreement with the union. We are all pro-union. We are, the three of us and other people in this room. So there ain't going to be a rat. All we wanted to do was eliminate subcontractors. So when things go wrong, one organization can be sued and they don't all go like this. That's what it was about. We're not, we, at least we were not, in our discussions, we were never talking about getting around unions. We all believe strongly in unions.
So who was then?
What?
Who was so talking? Who was talking about getting around? You said we at least, we at least.
No, no, I'm saying most of us in the room, as far as I know.
Are you implying something else?
No.
Okay, fine, thank.
With all due respect, nobody has ever accused you at any point in time of ever saying you want to circumvent Wicks law. Okay, nobody ever accused you. But there are members who have said repeatedly, "We're trying to circumvent Wicks law," and that's why we're doing LDC, and nobody said you.
I have never heard that at any meeting of these boards.
And I have heard it, and Don has heard it, and we talked about it last time.
I think.
Rebecca actually challenged.
Rebecca wants to make a comment. Can we have Rebecca?
Okay, I, I would like to go back to the discussion on the executive committee because I also feel that we all did come to some agreement. How formal that agreement may have been on, for either board, I don't feel that should be such an issue. We're talking about an executive committee, and for all the times many of us have said, "Move forward," the executive committee was moving forward. And being two members from each board plus one at-large person agreed upon, first of all, I would say that the agreement first should come between the two members from each board, the four of you as, you know, the beginning of that executive committee. And then, once you have that at-large member as a recommendation, bring it to each board for us to approve, for us to vote on, for us to ratify, basically. And also, a seven-member board, perfect, fine, but we're not at that point right now. If we really are moving forward, we need to move forward with what we've already agreed to. And also, each of us is elected by the public. Our seven-member board is not, is not a board that's going to be elected by the public. It's going to be elected by each board. What we're looking at is, in my opinion, as an executive committee, a much more democratic process because all of us have already been elected by our constituents. So the public has spoken in that regard. So I would like to propose that for our next meetings, a fifth person has been identified for each board to vote on.
Just so everybody's clear on my understanding of what we voted on last time. Last time, we were here talking about an LDC structure and what the operation of an LDC might look like. So conceptually, we came to an agreement in terms of how that would be operated. It wasn't necessarily a discussion about the executive committee, a composition of these boards moving the plans forward. In my mind, it was how the LDC was going to be operated going forward. Now with the input of Mr. Bond tonight, we kind of have to reformulate our thinking a little bit. We discussed having a composition of seven members. Now that we know that at least one of those members have to come from each municipality, something we learned tonight. So in terms of moving ahead, again, I agree in concept to a seven-member, the way we just discussed, a seven-member LDC board. In terms of how we move forward collectively, I think each board is going to decide how many members they want on a committee and agree on who they should be. I don't think we reached that at our last meeting, not that I recall anyway. In terms of the composition of the committee, and these people over here should be part of that committee because they've been involved the whole way, composition of a committee that moves the plans forward. That's my recollection of our meeting.
I really went into this meeting and was participating in this, this whole discussion expecting that we were going to talk as a board leader. So if you'd like to make an agenda change, Tim, let's, let's do that. I would still like to have a conversation as a village, and that's what the agenda is that we're constantly working under. So if you want to change the agenda, please, you know, please make a motion.
I'd like, if it requires a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we discuss the possibility of the village having a minority stake in ownership structure, whether it's directly or via LDC. I would like to have that discussion now. I need a second for my board.
I'll second it for purposes of discussion. Because we have, we have our colleagues from the, the town board here, and we had an agenda to get through.
We also have, we also have our attorneys sitting here as well.
I understand. So. Are they willing to just, to sit here?
I'm going to sit.
It's your motion.
It's your motion. The town's just on here again. Okay, so was there a second?
I seconded.
Right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, aye. So let's discuss it. Don, you said you had some specific points about this topic.
I did, I did. Switch to the other glasses. I also have some concern about the process that's been going forward. We had agreed that there would be an executive committee. And when that executive committee had their internal discussions, there was an early discussion of whether we'd be meeting public or not. And the decision was taken, and whether I supported that at the time or not, I stand behind it. The decision was taken to have those meetings not in public and have the public involved via public information sessions. There have not been any public information sessions. I know we have our meetings in public, but that's a little bit different. So I'm, I'm feeling like the public, this is a big deal, and the public needs to get a little bit more, more detailed information and chances to ask their questions. I'm also, I will just note that, as has been stated at this, at this table several times tonight, there have been two primary drivers of this project. And when we talked last week, or with last meeting anyway, about how the village should be a renter came to be on the agenda, it was my observation that that did not come through the executive committee process. And the response was, "Yes, it did. No, it didn't. Yes, it did." And finally, the comment was, "Marty and I talk every day on the phone." It's on the tape. That was the, that was the resolution to my, to my question. And I, I bring that up because I have concern. I have concern that in this room, the people with the most experience in municipal government have expressed some, some concerns. And I defer to Mr. Lent and to Ms. Zimmet. I have, throughout this process, been supportive, and I made the motion, the most recent motion, to reaffirm that the village was committed to this project. It was my motion. During this process, it was originally set up that the architect had been selected without a competitive bid. And it was because of my concern that the process now has now included a bid process and competition. That's the way it should be. I've reached out to other municipalities. The reason, I think, Mr. Bond, you were here tonight, is I made the observation that we had not consulted with bond counsel and were being asked to make major decisions. We were asked to make decisions before you ever consulted, and I had a concern with that, so I'm glad you're here. And I, because of the fact that I draw on some of my years of experience, I have made those suggestions and insisted on some of that process. I, I am not arrogant enough to think that I am smart enough and have all the answers. So when I face big decisions like this, I reach out, like I did to, to the six municipalities in New York who have done this before. I, I, I reached out recently to Mayor Nyquist. I figured he was, his wisdom was, was something I wanted to learn from. And I, I asked and received his permission to share some of his comments with the village board. Some very major decisions were made while I served as mayor. These included the construction of the water treatment plant, and the expansion of the existing water storage facilities, replacing the water line under the Walkill, expansion of the sewage treatment plant, installing a belt filter press, taking back the campus school playground, which is now Hasbrook Park, putting in new sidewalks, acquiring, acquiring land, which is now part of the rail trail. All of these were discussed thoroughly, several months at the very least, sometimes for more than a year, before a decision was made to proceed. While these were major projects, I don't think that any were of the magnitude of what is currently being proposed, the building of a new town village hall and selling of the current village complex. Does this mean relocation of all village facilities? Village hall, public works, fire department, at what cost? We were told, we were, this is me now, we were told in our last meeting that we had a deadline of December 1st to make major decisions. And I think those major decisions would probably be in the form of an IMA. We had been told back in October that we had a deadline, a drop-dead deadline, and if we didn't make major decisions by October, you know, everything would go to hell. Last meeting, we were told it's December 1st. Now we're told it's six weeks. I'm kind of getting ultimatum weary. You know, I think the ultimatum and the, and the, the goal is to have a good decision, not a quick decision. And if it comes down to a conflict between the two, I think the good decision has to, has to weigh out. We have, we have a supervisor-elect and trustees-elect who are going to live with this project. This is going to be their project. And I, in a perfect world, I would certainly like to see some of these major decisions made in all due respect to the, to the current board, by the future board. You know, last April, the town board decided to defer decisions on this, on this discussion until the new board was seated. And as an elect, trustee-elect at that point, I really, really appreciated that. I don't know why the same consideration is not given to the current town supervisor-elect and councilpeople-elect. I think they're the ones who are going to live with this for, for their terms. And I think they should certainly, before any major decisions are finalized, I certainly think they should have a chance to be in office and weigh in. Returning to Mayor Nyquist. An old saying comes to mind, buying a pig and a polk, and also the adage of making haste slowly. Establishing an LDC is a decision with long-term and costly implications. While I can appreciate the desire to cooperate with town government, I had the same concern. My rule of thumb was, what is best for the people of the village? They elected me to represent them, not the residents of the town outside the village. Finally, as a town taxpayer and voter, I think that the creation of an LDC should be the decision of the incoming town board that has to deal with its ramifications, rather than a board which will be history as of January 1st. And I quote Tom Nyquist with his permission. I am uncomfortable, not because I'm in opposition, which is sometimes how I'm portrayed. I'm uncomfortable because of my experience in moving quickly and with, with two members of our boards making decisions independent or without informing the boards. I came to the last meeting and was handed a memo about LDCs. It's the first time I, as a member of the executive committee, it did. It's the first time I, as a member of the executive committee, it didn't come out of our committee. I got it at the table that night. And, and I, to my experience, when I receive information the night of a meeting, it increases the chance of bad decision-making. So, I, I'm, I have been consistently supportive of the concept. I've also been consistently supportive of process involving the public, having documentation before we make decisions. And I'm, I'm, let me choose my words very carefully. I, without going into the substance, there's a ship that sailed, and it sailed. I don't want to, I don't want to go back to the ship. It's the whole discussion of an alternate water supply. Don't want to go there in terms of the details at all. The, the fact of the matter was that for months and months and months, New York City was giving out millions of dollars and trying to, you know, was, was, was looking to provide financial support for a project. Based on information I've seen in a recent packet, our village is, in all likelihood, going to be asked to bond for $6 million in the near future for improvements to water infrastructure and the water treatment plant. And I argued at the time that the village should try and get some millions from New York City Department of, you know, DEC during that project. It didn't, it didn't happen. But I think now to see that we are looking to maybe bond for $6 million gives me 6 million reasons to have concern about protecting the long-term issues of the village. And that's, that's been my consistent position. And I'm, 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 I'm very respectful and supportive of the mayor, but I think the reason we have a board is just like Kevin said, the checks and balances. And I, and I think, I don't mean, and I don't think, I'm being negative by referring to my years of experience and pointing out where the landmines might be and trying to avoid them, which is all I'm trying to do. I'm done.
This is not, this is not, this is not our meeting, Marty.
I think that we were supposed to discuss the minority stake. Did you have any comments about whether you were comfortable with a minority stake, Don? Because you said you had some specific comments, but you kind of talked about LDCs and the mentioning of an LDC, which I'm very comfortable with anyone bringing information to a meeting to discuss. That was the intention of the last meeting. You know, we had talked about special purpose vehicles or single-purpose entities like LDCs. You could refer back to emails within our executive committee on this building project from September 29th. So, when Marty brought the discussion of an LDC to our meeting on November 10th, no one was sitting here making motions, saying, okay, let's move forward with an LDC. So, I think you're really mischaracterizing what took place at the last meeting.
We have a process. We get a packet on the Friday before the meeting. That's how we educate ourselves. That's how we know and prepare and know what questions to ask, what concerns to have. We have a weekend to think about it, and in a couple more days. I have repeatedly found myself surprised. And I think you might be referring to project labor agreements that were discussed early on. I'm not sure you referenced that there were, these were, there were discussions of things like LDCs in September.
It's essentially the same concept. It's a financial structure to try to achieve the same thing.
I never heard the initials LDC in this context till last meeting. And I, and my concern is that in our private meetings of the executive committee, and again, I was not supportive of the decision to hold those meetings in private, but I have gotten behind them, and I, and that's, that's what we're doing, and I'm down with that. But in those private meetings, the goal of a PLA, in our discussions with, with outside entities, Nicerta and the like, the discussion was plainly, the primary goal of a PLA, and now LDC, in my interpretation, is avoidance of the WICS. That's, that's been stated very, very clearly and argued passionately in our private meetings.
That's absolutely correct. The, the reason that you would consider something like that is the primary advantage of considering something like that is to save the taxpayers of New Paltz money. That's our job. And we have counsel here who has explained why we would consider this.
And I had, I took notes. It was avoidance of WICS. That was, that was the first thing stated.
And the comptroller is comfortable with this approach because you're trying to achieve shared services.
The comptroller appointed by a very unpopular governor who will be out of office soon. And when that happens, maybe the approach towards shared services will change. We're talking about 20, 30, 40, 50 years here.
Okay, does anyone have anything they want to say about the village taking a minority stake in this?
Yes, doing so would not serve the long-term villages, the long-term interests of the village of New Paltz.
Right, and that's as per Don Kerr and against the counsel of Attorney Will Frank, of Attorney Ken Bond, of Treasurer Nancy Bronco.
Don Kerr, Tom Nyquist, Susan Zimmert, David Lent.
I believe that we could work out an agreement in an IMA that would not disadvantage the village if the village took a 75% stake in the, in the building.
Let them take the 75%.
Shoot, you're right. My foolish mistake. But it doesn't, in a sense, whatever, whatever percent I might stumble on is not the point. The point is that we could come up with an agreement that we could approve whether we were 50% owners or not. That's my point.
Don, you're also confusing the points that Susan and Dave Lent have made. They've said that they want a 75% ownership and 75% control, while you've asked for a 50-50. There's a reason why they're arguing for what they're arguing for and what you're arguing for. They're two different things.
Equal partnership.
Equal partnership that accomplishes nothing, except it just ties up village taxpayer money in an illiquid asset.
Now, I think I did talk in terms and raise the point quickly in the, in the course of a longer conversation about a 50-50 situation, but I, that was, that was satisfied by the thought of equal decision-making on the executive committee, the board, whatever we want, the five-person, the seven-person.
Right, so, we could, we could achieve that via the structure of that committee. What we were discussing is the minority stake in terms of an ownership in the property. And I think that is in the best interest of the village taxpayers, and it's in the best interest of keeping money free to run this village.
If I could just, I'm going to get the point. You keep using the word ownership here. The ownership in an LDC structure is by the LDC.
Right.
Okay? The members of the LDC have an undivided interest in it, as their interests may appear. Now, if you're paying for 75% of the space, being the town, because you have 75% of the space, and the village is paying 25% of the space, and the town is paying 75% of the debt service on the bonds, and the village is paying 25%, when the LDC is gone and the property comes back, it's going to be 75% to the town and 25% to the village. The operation of the facility during the time the LDC is around would be by a board that has equal representation by both the village and the town, by the way you have either a five- or seven-person board. That is a rational structure, which I think addresses everybody's point here in terms about some municipality having an advantage over the other.
And I, I think my, when it comes down to the assertion that a lease or a contract can, can protect the interests of the village in the long term, I will apologize in advance for my cynicism. I think I described that last meeting as unicorns and rainbows. Let me use a more, a more real-world example. I don't think there are more ironclad laws than our DWI laws. I think they're pretty strong. They're pretty ironclad. Yet, there are attorneys who make their living getting guilty people off of DWI charges. And I raise that just to make the point. There's no such thing as an agreement that a good attorney can't manipulate.
I'm sorry.
So, let me, let me just say something.
But this is not, it's not our part of the family.
And I would say that, looking 10 years in the future, looking 10 years in the future, looking 10 years in the future, when there might be totally different people and personalities involved, you know, I, I don't, I think it's impossible to make those, those.
Your concern, your concern is a policy matter. It makes a lot of sense. But let me just give you a little help with that on the law. If the composition of the village or the town were to change, the state legislature decided to dissolve towns, or the village under the village law were to dissolve, there are legal mechanisms for the obligations of those entities to be assumed by some successor entity. The, the, the people who are owed money don't go away, but somebody else assumes those responsibilities. So, your question about the dissolving of the village, for instance, the town takes that over. That is totally outside the concept of the local development corporation. With respect to a lease, both of the, of the entities would have some kind of an interest in the property, whether it's a lease or other kind of agreement that would go on for a length of period, at least as long as the bonds are outstanding, which is usually about 20 years. And there wouldn't be any basis for one of the municipalities to exclude the other from the building, because each of them is serving an essential function that they're required to under law. So, the notion that somehow the town could throw the village out, you'd go to court and get that stopped in an instant. That just can't happen.
Can I make a statement to my board here?
No, no, this is not, it's not our board meeting. It's not, no.
You're, yeah, you're not.
So, it's a joint meeting. It's booked an agenda item. Still a joint meeting in the town is still.
No, no.
Yes, it is, Susan.
We all agree.
The village is discussing item number nine on our agenda.
We agreed to allow the, we agreed for the village to move this up, for the village to have a purpose, for the village discussion without the town.
Okay, then, Susan, let us continue. So, I have a question for Rebecca. Rebecca, are you comfortable with the idea of the executive committee for the building department to continue to look at some sort of ratio? But the key question here is, can we move forward with the ability to pursue a minority stake, whether it's 25, 26, 24, just based on some sort of square footage number, some sort of, you know, A fund sharing, but as opposed to 50-50? Do you need 50-50, or can we look at minority stake?
I, I don't really feel like 50-50 is, I'm sorry, can I use the mic? First of all, I would like to see us pursue, you know, the form, the form of funding that we're going to use, like, you know, which is why you're here. And with that, I would like to look at it as a situation where, you know, we've, we've got essentially this overarching corporation, and, you know, once we have a better idea of what the building's going to look like and a better idea of who is going to use what space, I would like to see it as more thought as to each municipality renting from that overarching community.
Which is the structure that we're talking about.
Right.
So, the architect has identified that the village would use approximately 25% of the space, and the town would use approximately the remaining three-quarters.
Right. I would like, with our executive, with this five-person executive committee, I would like to see us start looking at how we're going to be pursuing the funding, how we're going to be ironing out those details, and then, and keep on talking about the 50-50 versus the other portion of it. I don't think it has to be.
This is a concept that we need, that we need to get comfortable with, the idea that the village can have a minority stake versus insisting that we have a 50, 50% stake. We need, we need that concept so we can plug in a formula to start looking at the structure of this corporation, whether it's an LDC or some other ownership structure.
Right now, I'm, I don't feel that strongly one way or another with 50-50 versus a minority circumstance.
If you can, just to try to keep the issues clear. The, the so-called 50-50 is on your board of directors with respect to the operation of the LDC, which is financing and owning and managing the facility. On behalf of both communities, the 75-25 is a proportion of the costs based upon square footage, I guess. And that would be a ratio that probably stays constant throughout the term of the bonds and the term of the use of the facility. It could change based upon people moving around. What's that? And, and, you know, when the, when it's all over and the property comes back to the two municipalities, it would be 75-25. It's the, it's the ratio of who's going to pay what percentage of debt service. So, so, it's not one or the other, it's both. It's an equal participation in the board of directors with an independent director to be able to split votes, and it's a ratio of costs and use based upon square footage.
Right, so, I.
And, and that seems, that's a pretty good deal.
Sure. So, what I'm trying to achieve as a joint project is that we have 50-50 membership, say, in major decision-making. But in terms of using village taxpayer funds, we could have a minority participation in the debt service. So, we're using less village funds than we would be if we were insisting that we have a 50% share of the debt service. I don't want to, I don't want to have an overweighted equity stake in this building, whether it's directly or indirectly through an LDC. So, that's the.
Mayor, you used the term equity.
I know, I know.
And here, but here, the equity is the use. Equity is the use, and that's reflected in the cost. The management of the company, the management of the LDC, is not an equity question, it's a management question.
Yes.
And that's where you have a.
I know, I'm not talking about the management split right now. That's a conversation we're going to continue to have with this town board, and I thought we had already had it on November 10th. But the question I'm asking right now is just whether this village board can get comfortable with the idea that we would only pay a minority share of the debt service.
I'd like to make a motion that the executive committee, which is comprised of Dan, myself, Tim, and Marty, come back to these boards with a recommendation on the percentage within 30 days, and that a public information session be set at least for the village of New Paltz during, during 2015.
Is that a joint?
I made that motion for the, you know, for the village.
I mean, but it implicates.
Can we, can we open it back up again?
Yeah.
Or discussion?
There's a motion on the table for the village.
But the motion has implication for the town.
So, I'd like to make, I'd like to suggest an amendment. Can we come back, can we come back with a response within five days? Why does it have to be 30 days?
To give us time to meet and discuss.
Which, which we've been doing for the last couple of months.
I'm trying to insist and.
We actually had a meeting at Water Street Market. You were there, and then we had another meeting the next week that there was a scheduling problem.
And that was my, my, my fault.
Right, that happens, but we have had meetings.
But if we, if we put a five-day limit on it, it again is this rushed process, and this is too big a deal to rush.
But what, what new information are you gathering?
You're presenting to the public. That's the portion of Don's proposal.
But we've presented to the public, I think, five or six meetings in a row now, this concept.
There's been no one here. I'm talking about what we agreed to do.
These are videotaped meetings. People regularly watch these meetings and comment to all of us about what we said.
What we committed to do as an executive committee was to have public information sessions, specifically where the public was, as has been done on other issues. We put out a press release saying, come to this meeting on this night, anyone who wants to learn, we're going to present, we'll answer your questions. That's what we agreed to do at the executive committee when we decided we weren't going to meet in public. We, that was the compromise. All right, we'll have public information sessions. So I would like to follow through with the commitment.
This is the ultimate public information session. This is a public meeting.
I, I don't agree with that, Tim.
No?
No. I, look, look at all, a lot of the different projects that, that we've done, village, town, what have you. We have had public informational sessions. It could be something where someone from county comes to talk about, you know, park projects, someone comes, you know, different invited guests come to talk about transportation.
We did on the new bus station, we did on the water project.
Yes, the bus station, where we all got together at the, at the college and sat around at big tables with maps in front of us, identifying where we feel a good bus station location would be, where we to move the bus station. That's the type of informational session that Don is referring to.
But, but we have one key issue that we're trying to sort out, and that's the, the village comfortable with only paying a minority stake of the debt service. So we're gonna, you want to have a, an info session on that topic?
No. All right, let me, let me clarify. If we, the resolution, the, the rest, the proposal is that the executive committee report back within 30 days. If we can do it in five days, that's within 30 days. The public information session is not on this topic, it's on the project itself, to invite the public as we look at the bus, bus station, several times with the water project.
Okay, but that's, that's, that's a completely separate request that has nothing to do with the, the topic that we've been talking about. You want to have a public info session on the, the concept of the muni center?
We want to.
Fine, but what we're trying to do right now is to iron out one particular detail.
What we have been talking about consistently, some of us consistently through this meeting, is transparency and process.
It's a motion on the table.
Yeah.
No, we're discussing the motion on the table.
The motion hasn't been set yet.
I did.
No, let's second.
So the, the motion is to have an info session within, like, let's schedule, let's open, you know, let's pull out our calendars and schedule it.
Can I, can I speak since I'm on the executive committee and this will also affect?
I'd like me as well.
Sure, yes.
Okay. So, a number of things with this. We had a disagreement early on with this, the formation of the committee about how we should go forward in doing these meetings in public. And we did come to a consensus, and not all of us were necessarily thrilled with it, but it was a consensus we agreed upon. And we did talk about having the public sessions. I absolutely think that we should schedule a public session. However, I will say that I do think we have adequately updated the boards throughout this process at these meetings. Still doesn't mean that we shouldn't have that session, but I, I do think that we have done that in between as well. So when we had that meeting on Wednesday, and, and there was a scheduling error, it doesn't matter how it happened.
I messed up. That's what happened.
I wasn't going to throw you under the bus.
It's okay.
Um, one of the items that we had actually hoped to discuss was that, and, and I hear Don's concerns as well about how things have been brought to the table, but they've been brought to the table at those meetings, and we have then discussed them as a group. They were not items that were already done, because even if two members had spoken, brought them to the table, which admittedly happened, we then still, as a collective group of four, had that conversation. And if Don and I disagreed with what two members had done, we would have been at a standstill. So although I absolutely hear why that could be perceived as an issue, I still think there was a mechanism to fix that, because we still had those open conversations. I have no issue with us meeting again. We also, I'd like to remind everyone, originally agreed on having a December 1st joint meeting to have this conversation as well. So I would say that, you know, since this was a conversation we already wanted to discuss relative to, to who would own what percentage, that we try as a group to meet and have that conversation, and then bring it back on December 1st with a recommendation and take a vote. I, I mean, I, I get the 30 days, but we've already got a meeting in place anyway, and that would still keep us kind of on target for what we've already discussed. And I'm seeing Katie raising her hand.
You need to make a formal motion to change the meeting place for the meeting, because I'm told by the town clerk you can't have a meeting in town hall, which is what you had motioned to have.
December 1st or December.
Okay, but it could be placed here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so before this meeting's over, we'll make that change.
So do you want to add that as a, an agenda item, that there'll be a formal public presentation on December 1st, updating the public about the muni center?
I would agree to that, for the amendment.
Okay. And then there was a second part to your motion. What was the second part?
The executive committee meets and come back with a recommendation, and we have a public information session.
Okay, so we're going to meet before December 1st, and then the December 1st meeting will include a public info session on the muni center.
Kevin wanted to.
Kevin, use a microphone.
Couple things. First, why would you want to have a public information session until the board understands what you're trying to explain to the public? That's my big question.
Number one, because we agreed to do so.
Okay, but why would you want to create misinformation until you verify the facts?
Create misinformation?
Yeah, done. You don't have a public information session until you, as trustees and board members, understand what you're talking about. That's number one. And number two, you talked about earlier, Don, that you're elected to protect the interest of village residents. What are those interests? And how are they really different from outside, the, outside the village residents? How are they really different?
Because in a minority situation with, when there are conflicts, I think it would be natural for most arbitrators, most judges, most observers to say, well, the town has 75% of the, of the ownership, so.
What are the interests?
The major partner, not the junior partner.
What are the interests, though, that you're trying to protect?
The village has a separate budget.
I, I know, but what, tell me what the interests are.
Uh, the existence of the village. I'm, I'm sorry, Kevin, there are, there are different.
No, I just, when people say things, I want them to explain to me what they mean. You said that you want to protect the interests of the village. So I just, when you say something like that as a reason for taking a position, I just want to understand what those interests are, so I can understand what you're trying to say. So, and I still don't understand what you're trying to say.
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry for that. I have consistently said that in a situation where one municipality has a majority ownership and has majority stake in things, that whatever conflicts may arise in the future, the senior partner would have an advantage in power and decision-making over the junior, junior member. And I think we've talked about arbitration, we've talked about Article 78s, we've talked about all sorts of things, and I think anyone looking at resolving a conflict in the future, whatever it may be, it's a big issue, I'm not going to give you a list, we could all come up with our own lists. But when presented with a conflict, I think any arbitrator would say, well, let's go with the folks who have 75%.
I, I'd like to go with what our village attorney says, and what Mr. Bond says about that topic. Will, if you have any thoughts on what's being discussed here, I would, I would love to hear from you, about Don's concern that being a minority stakeholder is, is a junior position, and therefore a risky position. But you need to use a microphone.
Can I go see next to the board?
Sure. Then you're on camera.
Well, I, I think that there's a lot that I want to discuss with the village board on, in terms of the Wicks Law, and there's been a lot of discussion about the Wicks Law tonight, and, and as I'm sure Ken will tell you, and perhaps some of the other folks around the table, the Wicks Law is not very popular with municipalities, it's not particularly popular with the construction trade. And there's been a years-long movement to significantly modify or get rid of the Wicks Law outright for a lot of reasons, but that's another topic that we're not going to, I don't want to get into at this point. As far as the concerns that Don has, I mean, I understand they're, they're valid concerns, but when we're really talking about the purpose of the joint government center, once it gets built, we're really going to be in a situation where, whether there's a lease or an IMA, the town's going to be using the majority, whatever that number is, the majority of the facility, and the village is going to be using certainly less than 50% of the facility, no matter how you put the numbers together. We do absolutely have to have proper mechanisms for dispute resolution when a dispute arises, whether we're in a landlord-tenant situation, whether we're in a majority-minority ownership situation, and I think those all have to be negotiated. And I think whether you talk about a 50/50 decision-making process, or something less than that, I, I don't think that that's, that has to carry the day in the next month. That's just my feeling on it. I think we have to have further discussions about it. That's, that's how I feel about it at the moment. Ken, I mean, we've talked about a lot of things tonight with the LDC, how it could be structured, what the ramifications are for construction. I think we have to continue some of those discussions. Yeah, just a couple points. I, your, your right to distinguish between the, the management of the company and the proportionate use and proportionate payment and responsibilities for that, for that use. They're two different things, and the, the, a board that's got equal representation with a, with an independent director is a, is a logical way that protects any concern about minority interest that the village might have. If anything, you know, the mayor said, would the village go along with having a minority share of the debt service? Well, of course you would. The less you have to pay, the better off you'd be. But I, I'm being rhetorical here. The point, the point is, is that, is that if you, you're only going to pay for what you use. You wouldn't pay for 50% if you're only using 25%.
But, but to Don's point, he's fearful that if we don't pay at least 50%, then we are forfeiting some sort of control or say.
No, that's the, that, just about, that's the, that's the confusion that I'd like to try to get clear.
Right.
Between the cost and use and the management of the company. The facility will be owned, the title will be in the local development corporation, which would have a board that is equally in control of, by both municipalities.
Right.
And, and, and it would keep in force the 75/25 or whatever ratio it is.
If I can just, just to just clarify for one thing, just so you know, because I understand this well, and I am probably the minority vote out of nine, you know, 10 people, I'm the only one. Where Don wants 50/50 equity and 50/50 say, you know, which I will agree to, okay? I don't agree to, but I'm the minority, and I accept the fact that I'm the minority. I don't agree to the 50/50 management when we're paying 70% of the cost. So I just want you to understand, because you keep sort of saying, well, the building's going to be managed 50/50, you know, but then there'll be a different equity in the split of the payment, which I get, which is what I don't accept, because I think that's a laissez-y-deal for the town, quite frankly. And I think, you know, for the town to give up a decision-making process but have to pay the bill when we're making decisions equally, I just think is a bad idea. But I'm only one of nine people, and I'm okay. That's all right, you know? You lose some, you win some.
But, but.
I just want you to understand that.
No, no, I, I, I get you entirely, Susan. And, and I can, but again, you try to keep distinguishing in your mind that you have to have some sort of balance in terms of the management of the company, which means equal, equal number of, of people on the board of directors. The 75/25 is simply arithmetic and allocating portions.
The 75/25 is the allocation of the.
Membership interest and use.
It's the use, but not membership interest.
And, 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 no, the cost, the cost.
This is a not-for-profit corporation.
No, 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 I know, I understand that.
There are no shareholders.
No, I, I get that. But again, we're done, you know, this conversation that Tim is trying to get to, yes, with his board, okay? Don's feeling is, I want, and if I'm wrong, please tell me, okay, Don, if I, you know, my understanding is, Don wants 50/50 decision-making for the village and the LDC for the management, and he wants to pay 50% of the operating cost because he wants to have an equal share in the building. That's where he's leaning for the moment, okay, I think.
No, 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 Susan.
Well, before Don.
Hold on, let Don beg. Let Don make his comment.
No, I, I don't think I've been insisting on 50/50 equity in the building. I think that the percentage is an important question. I want it to go through the process. I am comfortable in asked at the last meeting about the 50/50 decision-making. That was something that, that I felt agreeable to. I think the question of the percentage and equity is one that I would like to go through the process that we set up. I'd like the executive committee to meet and make that decision and make recommendations to the board. And if we could call the question, that might actually happen.
Well, I'll just say it one more time. There is no equity interest. This is a not-for-profit corporation.
That's, yeah, but that's technically.
That would own, okay, that would own, that would own a facility.
But somebody has. There's a membership interest which converts into an equity interest at the end.
Yes.
But that's the, that's the split, that's the 75/25.
No, but, timeout, let me just understand something for a second, because maybe I'm a total idiot, and it's really possible, you know? When this LDC gets created, bonds get floated, and the bonds will be paying the cost of building the building.
The whole thing.
And then ultimately, we're going to end up, then, the town and the village are going to lease from the, the LDC, our portion of what we're using.
Or less, yes?
Okay.
Right?
The LDC dissolves.
Microphone.
Because the ownership of a not-for-profit is in the membership, and because the town will have a 75% membership interest from day one, and the village will have 25% at the end, when the building becomes jointly owned, it's 75/25.
Yes.
And one other sort of governance comment that I would make, that I believe you brought up. With respect to bringing this to the, to having a public session, the best way to do that, in my judgment, what I would recommend, is to have a plan that's been agreed upon by either your executive committee, or the town board, or the board of trustees, so that at the, at a, at a public meeting, you present a plan that has been determined. If you don't do that, and you have a public meeting, and you have disagreements among yourself, all chaos will break out. And Susan, I think, if you remember when, two years ago, we tried to work on the consolidation thing, unfortunately, that's what happened a lot of times, that was not firm plan.
We're talking about the consolidation of the middle school, or are we talking about consolidation of the town and village?
The whole thing.
Yeah, no, I know. And, and point taken, to go back to what Don says. We have had wars in this community when we've tried to do things that we thought were for the benefit of the taxpayer in, you know?
All right, so, so, okay, so, then, Don, can we, can, can I make another friendly amendment to your, your motion? So the, the discussion will continue on December 1st, and that will be after we get input from the exec committee on this topic. So it's not a, it's not a public presentation, it's a, it's a, it's a continuation of this discussion, and then on the first, we can make.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just on the first, that we, that we can make a final determination about, about this, this idea.
What's the question?
I think the resolution.
Wait, I think Will had a suggestion.
And the cost will be allocated.
I'd like to clarify what the resolution was. No, I'd like to clarify what the res, what the resolution was. No, I'd like to clarify what the res, what the resolution was. It was that we first, the executive committee come back to our boards in terms of the questions on the table, in terms of percentages.
Yeah.
And then we have a public information system, session after that decision's been made. So I'm not suggesting we have a public information session when we don't know what the plan is.
Okay.
If you want to do it on the first, ah, you know, that's kind of like doing both things at the same time.
That's fine.
And that could get messy. So I think the public information session should be after the first.
Okay.
That's just me, that was the original resolution.
So are we clear about?
Will, did you want to make another comment?
What's on the table?
I think Don helped with clarifying that, and now Will's gonna make his comment.
I think so too. I think what you, the next time, you know, we're gonna address this with the public, not, you know, an information session, more of an update on where the progress is, because I don't think we're gonna have every detail of this hashed out by December 1st or the middle of December, the end of the year. We'll, we'll have some of it, certainly the percentages will be hashed out once the executive committee gets together and there's, and there's some consensus there, but.
The only bit that I'm interested in hashing out is the village's willingness to have a minority stake versus insisting that we have a 50% stake of the debt service, not of the, not of the decision-making process.
But we have a two-stage proposal on the table. One is that the executive committee duly constituted of five members.
Four members.
Four members, but I thought duly constituted of five.
Now, now there's four of us, which means we have to have consensus.
Yes, that you will meet in the very near future and be back to this board and that board.
With a recommendation on December 1st.
With a recommendation by December 1st.
I had said 30 days, but I agreed to Tim's friendly amendment to make it.
To make it by December 1st.
And then I think another friendly amendment is then let's also shoot for scheduling this presentation later in December.
Right.
Rebecca, you with us on this?
Absolutely.
I call the, the motion, I, I call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd also like to, oh, ayes, sorry.
Aye. We have four, four votes.
Four zero. Okay, then I'd also like to make a, another motion that our board identify that fifth person for the exec committee. Do I have a second that we throw some names around?
Can I just, can I just, you're, you're, the executive committee for the moment, we have a building committee. Somehow an executive committee got formed, you know?
Not somehow, the board's agreed to.
No, 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 I know, I know, I know that, I know that, I'm sorry.
It's not somehow, it got formed by resolution here.
Um, no, that's.
It was a meeting a long time ago, we invited the village to our board meeting. So, but that was a committee that was put together to determine whether or not the village wanted to do anything with it.
That's exactly right, okay? It was put.
We had a second vote at this table at the last meeting.
Marty, all I'm trying to, you know, you know, all I am trying to do is clarify, there's an executive committee, okay, it's not the executive, you have an executive committee, which is tasked with making certain decisions to move this project forward. That's different than the LDC and how we formulate the LDC. So I just want to be, I just want to be clear, okay? So there's a building committee, and we added the fifth person to the building committee, okay, which was Agnes at the, at the town board meeting, so there's now five people on the building committee. We've got the four members on the executive committee. I'm not quite, I just want to ask Tim, so I wanted to make sure we were talking not about the LDC, about the executive committee, and I just want to ask why you wanted at this point to put a fifth person on the executive committee? That's all I'm asking.
So we have a non-number of people, so I.
We voted at this table to put a fifth member on that. Susan, we voted to put a fifth member on. It's not that he wants it, we voted to put a fifth member on it.
Right, but all I want to do now is talk about who that fifth person would be, and I want to make a, a suggestion. I want to suggest that we add George Seifre as a fifth person to that executive committee. Community member George Seifre. I'm, I'm bringing that up for discussion.
I wasn't prepared to make that decision, I haven't even really thought, I'm not prepared to vote on that by any means. I, I love George, I mean, I, I'm a big fan, but you bring this up out of nowhere at the end of a meeting, I'm not prepared to vote on that.
As I suggested earlier, I would like for both the executive committee to discuss that person and come back to both boards at, at our respective meetings to make a recommendation that can be voted on separately by both boards.
I'll vote.
Which would come within our board packet as a resolution in ample, ample time for all board members to consider.
I mean, the reason that I was bringing up adding this fifth person sooner rather than later is so we could have five individuals, Susan, please, that we have five individuals to talk about this concept with, so if we, before December 1st.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, Tim, to get clarity, because I just thought when we talked about the fifth person, it was if we should create the LDC, that was all. I thought that that's what the fifth person was for, for the LDC, not for the executive committee, that's all.
And I, I think, you know, given the dynamics that we've seen, I'm, I'm confident that when the executive committee of four makes a recommendation, if the four of us can agree, I think that's a good thing, and that's something, I think that's something that our board's gonna have confidence in.
Okay, so then we're gonna come back to, to the meeting on December 1st as a four-person exec committee with a recommendation regarding a potential minority stake for the village, as well as a, a potential fifth person to fulfill that at large. That's, that's what you guys are seeing.
That's not part of the resolution, but I.
No, 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 this, we already voted on the resolution.
Yeah, we voted on your resolution, Rebecca now made a second resolution or motion, and that, that's, I'm, I'm second to that.
Okay.
So we're in conversation about that second motion, which is to bring to the board, leaving, you know, you guys have to make your own decisions, bringing to our board at least a recommendation for a fifth.
I can work with that.
Member of the, you want to call a vote, or you want to further discussion?
Sure. All in favor.
Aye. Are you in favor?
I sit up.
Okay, so we're four zero on that.
Are we back in the discussion again?
I don't know.
Okay. You just wasted the other, here we are.
Yeah, we're done, we're done. If you guys want to talk about this topic as part of your joint meeting.
Sure. Good. Well, then I would like to go back and comment on, if we're back in the discussion?
Sure.
I would like to go back and comment on something that Don Kirk said, and it's about me, so that's why I'm responding. Don, indeed, I have put out dates that I perceived as deadline, and except for tonight, when I didn't add the caveat, I believe that at every other time that I've put out a date, I have said it's predicated on when the architect finishes his programming, and I have described that conceptually as being the first two weeks of the first phase called schematic design. Up until the architect started doing his programming, we were very much conjecturing when that date would be in the future. I have picked December 1st at one time. I think I might have picked a date in September, if we go back and look, and that was before we went from negotiating with one architect to going through the time-consuming process of interviewing architects, so the date obviously changed. I have also said that my, one vote on the town board, my recommendation to my colleagues on the town board will be, when we, when the architect has finished the programming phase, that if there is not a satisfactory agreement in place between the town and the village, that we will have two choices. One choice is to tell the architect to stop his work until there is that consensus that's satisfactory to my colleagues. The other is to tell the architect to design the village, the building for the town. On one person, that's been what I have said would be my recommendation, that has been the criteria for which I have said would be my recommendation, when the architect is finished with the programming, and it is still my, going to be my recommendation. I have said tonight, I think that is six weeks from now, because he is, when he's finished with the schematic design, two weeks from now or less when he's finished with the programming, and I'm still gonna recommend to my board, if there is not an understanding, that they go alone, that we go alone. Now, you could argue, any of you, well, then you're not looking after the residents of the village. My answer is, I represent 14,003 residents of New Paltz. Half of them live in the village, I represent them. You and I, both representing those 7,000 people, might have differences of opinions, that's okay, but my representation of those 7,000 constituents in the village is as valid as yours, in my opinion. And I will recommend to my board, whenever the architect is finished with his programming, that if there is no agreement, that we go alone, because I will not subject 14,000 residents to a delay and stall in the project. And, and, and my, my written record of what I have tried to do, I think is pretty clear. Back in September, I don't remember the date, actually, Tim said it before, I sent a memo, and I did not use the word LDC, the letters LDC, I didn't know them. I used the words, the letters SPE. I think I might have misspoken as, and called it a single-purpose entity, I think I heard a different term tonight, but.
No, you're right, that's the term.
Okay, so, so.
But it's the same concept.
The concept of an LDC, if you're gonna get hung up on, nobody ever told us about an LDC, you heard about an SPE, and you heard about a PLA. It's in writing. It's, it's not something that you have to wonder, it's in an email from me. So it's not a new concept. As to the terms that we have to agree to, months ago, I circulated to the four of us an email that I outlined what, in my naivety, I thought were the thresholds, starting questions for us to negotiate. I followed that up with the same memo, recirculated it to us, we're going back months. Nothing has been accomplished. I'm not optimistic that whether we have a deadline of December 1st or 30 days, that anything is going to be accomplished.
I'm still optimistic. Do you guys want to talk about anything else before we let?
I'm off to adjourn.
Wait, you have to change it, you can pass it.
Yeah, we have to change the meeting.
Yes.
I'd like to make a, a motion to have a joint meeting at December 1st here at Village Hall.
Aye.
Seconded.
We've, we've already agreed for it, we're just moving the location to the village.
Oh, we're, we're doing 7:30 too, because Rebecca had a.
We've already agreed to a December 1st joint meeting, I thought.
Yes.
But location, we're changing location.
For public.
Aye.
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 Is it Village Hall now?
Do you want to do that TIC thing, or you want to do that in April?
This is gonna take literally two seconds, two minutes, not even. All the TIC wants to know is they want to set up a joint email account to take concerns where residents think that there are potential safety issues. Before they went forward, they requested that Tom and I just bring to this board to make sure that nobody had an issue with them doing that, and if they didn't have an issue with them setting up a Gmail account opposed to a town account, so we could avoid the expense and share it between the two municipalities.
I'm sorry, who's this?
Transportation.
Transportation, implementation committee. They just requested that I, we bring it here before they moved forward with it. That is the whole conversation. As long as nobody thinks there's a huge issue with that, I don't even think we need a formal vote, but I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
I mean, I'm not gonna try to make a big deal out of it, other than the fact that we've tried really hard to not allow, like, any department or any committee to have their own account outside of the purview of the.
We, we could do a town account, that was fine too, I was gonna.
I mean, so I'm not saying I have a problem, I'm just saying that we've worked really hard to not allow anybody to go outside of a town account, and we've tried to keep control, so, you know, because, and so, I just feel really reluctant.
Is there really a material expense?
It's a dollar fifty, but the only reason why we wanted to do it as a Gmail account was because it's gonna be town and village, and then we would have to assign a certain entity, so if the village doesn't mind, we can assign it to the town.
That sounds fine to me.
Okay, so that's.
And let's spend the money on the email account.
There we go. That sounds great, we're done.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Yeah, it's fine.
You send me the police, whatever I need to.
I was happy to talk, you're doing the right thing.
We really have to take power on it, I think, so.
You're just saying, uh.
I'm trying to.
Entertaining.
Yeah, you get to go home. I'm not gonna go home.
It's just entertaining. You know, the pit has been discussed by town board since 1973.
No, earlier than that.
They got it in 1969, or 68 or 69 for.
Actually, a community member sent me a this-long email with a history of the pit and all.
Yeah, 1973.
It's a pretty wild one.
1973, they got together, they were discussing, so.
It's going well. We want to make the.
Okay, what do we have? I'd like to make a mo, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
You got that, Katie?
Can we have LaQuai in the room? We're trying to have a meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Item number six.
Thank you, um, thank you all lawyers, thank you.
I'm standing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if we're setting a public hearing, I think that needs to be done as part of our regular meeting, where it's, the public hearing announcement is read.
This seems to be knowledgeable.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda in that way? Move item number six to the business section?
All in favor, aye, so we're gonna move six to the business?
Yep.
Good catch, Rebecca.
Good education, everybody else is.
So items three through seven excluding six, consent agenda, I motion makes up?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving out to the business agenda, I make a motion, well, how do we do this? We have a roll call, so we have to.
So, Your Honor?
Aye.
What's this roll call on?
For the bills and claims.
Approval of bills and claims. Aye.
Governor, Mayor, aye. Trustee Kerr?
Aye.
Trustee Rock?
Aye.
Four, four ayes, no, no, zero no's, zero abstain, one absent, trustee Rock, trustee Young, motion carried.
Okay, I'm good with skipping over nine, we, we kind of flogged that horse tonight. Item 10, I was actually speaking with Will about this, because our, our clerk's office helped with drafting a proposed resolution regarding this, but I, I wanted to speak with Will about whether this is, this is a local law or a policy change, and I think in the past, when we offered parking for rent at Village Hall, it was actually a, a local law. So Will and I are meeting tomorrow on a, well, we're doing the closing for Millbrook Preserve tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow, at 10:00 AM.
Way to go, team.
If I can jump in here, probably, I just talked to that.
Yeah.
So everybody can hear. We have the closing set for tomorrow for the acquisition of the property from Shuangunkh Reserve.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Denise, thank you.
We'll talk to you. As everyone knows, the environmental came back clean, the Phase 1 environmental came back clean, the appraisal came back at a much higher number than what we are paying for the property. Nancy has drawn the checks that are set for tomorrow's closing, those monies came from the, the last bond issue that Ken helped us with, and we have funds available for the completion of the purchase price, closing costs, which are nominal, just says some title charges. So the documents have been pre-signed by the corporate officer, Mr. Beanstock. I've already gotten the title work done, so our title company doesn't even have to be here tomorrow, it's just gonna be myself, myself and the mayor, and the seller's attorney are meeting at 10:00. Okay?
Excellent, and I just signed everything that I need to sign?
Yeah, we're meeting here at 10:00 AM, the whole thing should take about 10 minutes, and the village will then, once a deed is filed, be the record owner of that property, which I think is very, very exciting news for, for the village. After that meeting, for the closing, the mayor and I are gonna take up this issue, we're gonna take a look at the current code on the parking question, and we have some metered spots in there, if I'm correct, Mr. Mayor, there's some metered, we're talking about some metered spots.
Yeah, we have metered spots at 15 Platte Hill, and we're gonna offer those as monthly, so we're gonna determine whether that should be a law or a policy.
Yeah, I think if we have spots that are metered, shown in the code as metered, we may have to take them out of the code.
Okay, so that's probably a change to the law.
But we'll, that's, that's a matter of doing, that's not something that has to be referred to the county or any of that jazz, we can just knock that out in relatively short order if the village court is in agreement on what to do there.
Okay, and then, the right of entry, didn't you make a comment about this earlier, Katie?
Yes.
So, okay, the point that you were sharing with me, which I thought was worth emphasizing, is that we had, we brought this up last week, this is related to the New York Rising Project, where we're working with New York Rising to receive funds to harden our sewage treatment plant and improve inflow and infiltration of storm water, so we would have to provide, we would have to agree to a right-of-entry agreement with DASNY, who would be the sub-recipient for this project. DASNY already has an agreement with the governor's office, so our attorney, Will Frank, has reviewed this document, so I'm sharing that with you, and our intention is, I'm going to sign that and, and get that out the door. And then, next...
There were no issues with that agreement?
Yeah.
Yes.
It was standard stuff, and it's, and it's required to move forward.
We don't need any action.
I think it was...
Do we need an action, just to, for the board to be okay that I'm going to go ahead and sign it?
You had that last...
We already did this, right?
Pending approval of the attorney.
Pending approval of the attorney, thank you.
Yes.
So, we're done with that, next item...
And I'd kind of like to go, go home, I just was, would like to see some supporting information and background in the next packet, if we could talk, talk about it, item number 12 at the next meeting.
Number 12.
Yeah. I, I really am tired, I'd like to go home.
Okay, but I, I, I just have two quick, very quick, very quick.
Sure.
Uh, one is, again, in, in regard to the bike ped, which I communicated, I believe, verbally with a number of you, and maybe in writing even, that we are short two members from the village, and the bike ped committee would like to get up to full membership, and they will make recommendations to us, but we will need to act, so I just want this on our next agenda, or agenda immediately thereafter, so that we will be able to act quickly to fill out the membership of the bike ped committee. The second thing I would like to do, even though we did not get the report by our auditing firm, I've reviewed the material from the auditors, and I want to go on early record of commending the treasurer for the results of the annual audit, and I want also to put the recommendations of the auditor on another future agenda. I want this to be the first mention, so that we can bring up a, a number of items, I count four, recommendations that we can act on with very little effort to get on our agenda.
Sounds good.
Um, before we adjourn, I just want to go into exec, I want to update you guys on a couple of, um, real estate-related concepts that would involve...
That could potentially affect the price of real estate that's owned by the village, which is appropriate for executive session.
Okay, and regarding item number 12 that we're putting off on to, for the next agenda, I believe that should also be something that we discuss in executive session before acting.
And just on a personal note to Will and Tom, I got dressed at 4 o'clock this morning in Costa Rica, so, I don't know if it was ripe at all, I apologize.
Okay, so we'll, we'll come out and adjourn, but we don't intend to take any action.
Or when you cannot, you still have to make the motion to set a public hearing on the next agenda, and you can vote for it. Right.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, item number six.
Let's do that now, then.
Yes.
Let's do that now.
And make a motion to set a public hearing on December 9th, 2015, at 7:00 PM, for the Platico Avenue OCR performance hearing.
Thanks, Katie, good catch.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Next agenda?
We did it.
You did it?
Yeah. That's what we pulled from the consent, you stand up.
Sure.
You're here. I'm a member of the board, you're a resident, you're a board member, that's fine, I don't have to...
Please, please, sure. I thought I was, I was, I was filing. First, yeah, the two days in the jungle of Costa Rica, this is the town. We were sent, we have been sending from, uh, Tulsa, New Orleans.
With the consent of the village board, we will now stop broadcasting.